I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, May 21, 2003. Our apologies to the assembled group that our executive session went a little bit longer than expected, so thank you for your patience. The roll call at the moment, all nine members are here. Mrs. Cannelli is here, Mr. Convertito, Mr. Lu, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer. You know, Mr. Dwyer is my father, so I have a hard time not just saying Phil's here. Mrs. Iaccona, Mr. Fattabine, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. All present, if I have you, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While Dr. Tidal is moving into position, I'd like to make one comment. For those of you who normally come to these meetings, you're accustomed that every time we cast a vote, other than the minutes and whatnot, we go to the public for discussion. When we were faced with the budget vote at the very beginning, and we had a number of board members who wanted to test out an idea, we thought that would make it a very difficult meeting to have, where it was some discussion, then to the public, discussion, then to the public, discussion, and then to the public. And so the bylaws allow the board chair to have some discretion in how they manage a meeting and public comment, and so to facilitate the smooth operation of this board meeting when it comes to the budget adjustment motion. It will be my intent to take amendments to it from the board, and they'll either pass or fail, but I won't go to the public on each amendment. Once we have a main motion that is either in a current form or as fully amended, then the public will be able to address all of the comments. If there is an item on the budget list at the moment that you came and hope that is not going to be remaining on the list, and by amendment it's off, you can go home. But if it remains on, then you'll still have your ability to talk about that issue when we bring the motion up for a main motion, just so that you understand the process in advance, if you will. So our first item on the agenda is one that we have far more joy in than talking about budget adjustments, and that is recognizing student achievement in a variety of forms. And so Dr. Tidal has some awards to make for Fairfield Middle School, and I will join him at the podium.
Thank you. Fairfield Woods students were on the Washington trip when we did this two weeks ago, and so as is our tradition, we honor them at the next meeting. So I'm going to have the recipients come up one at a time, stand here, and then I'll read a little bit about each person, and then we'll recognize them. So the first award winner of the Superintendent's Award is Daniel Noor from Fairfield Woods Middle School. Come on up. Daniel has made high honors for every marking period in middle school with a love of math and science. He's been one of the lead actors in all three drama productions at Woods: Seussical, Tom Sawyer, and How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying. That's really the name of the show. Helps make lunches for Operation Hope families during the summer. This is done by volunteer homerooms during the school year, and has participated in community cleanup projects throughout his involvement in Boy Scouts at the Fairfield Grace Methodist Church. Congratulations, Daniel. These are sponsored by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, so this is from you guys. The first recipient from Fairfield Woods Middle School is Kendall Brown. Welcome. Kendall excels in all she does at Fairfield Woods. She's received high honors during every marking period. She has a love for math and was invited to the World Finals for Odyssey of the Mind when she was in fifth grade. It's a good segue to the next award. An avid dancer, Kendall participates in dance class several days per week. It has been an active member of the dance team, earning first place in numerous competitions, including the Access Broadway and Starbound Events. She's been selected to mentor younger dancers at the studio where she attends. Kendall gives back to her community through her church, the Black Rock Congregational Church, by collecting, creating, and delivering Thanksgiving baskets to needy families during the holiday. Kendall is a bright star at Fairfield Woods and a friend to all. Congratulations, Kendall. And our second recipient of the Cabe Student Leadership Award is Andrew Paake. Welcome, Andrew. He's an exemplary student, earning high honors at Fairfield Woods. He's received special recognition from Congressman Jim Himes for his exceptional performance on the John Hopkins Talent Search in 2009. Andrew is a gifted musician, playing the double bass in various ensembles at Fairfield Woods and in the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra for the past four years, where he was the youngest member of the prestigious Principal Orchestra last year and the second youngest this year. Andrew was also selected to be a member of the Honors Orchestra, performing to a full house at the Fairfield County Strings Festival at the Ives Auditorium at Western Connecticut State University in March. He's earned a black belt in karate and is often given the responsibility of teaching younger students. His other interests include fencing, science, and mathematics, for which he's earned performance awards in both state and national competition. Congratulations, Andrew. And that completes my part of the award ceremony.
I commented at an earlier board meeting that, based on injuries and health and whatnot, serving on the Board of Education can be dangerous. Mrs. Cannelli's crutches have nothing to do with the Board of Ed or our workers' comp insurance, but nonetheless, we will not ask her to go up to the podium to make the awards, but to speak from the chair. Mrs. Cannelli?
Well, it would certainly make me talk faster. At this time, I'm hoping, if they're all present, if Claire Truniski, Brody Hopkinson, Maeve McManus, Blake Holroyd, Bridget Keery, and Michael Macalise, and their coaches, Amy Carey and Stephanie Hallrood, if you could come up, please. As Dr. Tidal mentioned in his words about Kendall, Odyssey of the Mind is a thriving international competition which rewards creative, collaborative, problem-solving. Fairfield has a long history of supporting Odyssey of the Mind teams. Going back, again, Burr had a team go to Worlds. Two years ago, Stratfield had two teams to go. We've had participants from Mill Hill, Woods. This year, Tomlinson had two teams for the first time in years. Fairfield Ludlow High School has, in recent memory, as has Roger Ludlow. And this group here before you had the tremendous honor on April 6 in Bristol, Connecticut, of taking second place in their division, where they presented, and I was there to witness, an extremely creative and highly amusing, and I wish I could get Michael to do his dance, of the Cathedral of Notre Dame and the very inventive, delightful skit that they put on, for which they were awarded a second-place finish, which gets them a trip to the Worlds competition at Michigan State University. And are you leaving tonight or tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning.
So they've got a long trek out there, and just their work is something that this whole district can be so proud of, and which we can look to emulate in so many aspects of our curriculum. And I believe they had a couple of words to say?
Please do.
For our problem, we had to create and perform an original skit that included a replica of an architectural structure that was built between 1,000 A.D. and 1,600 A.D. The performance had to include three works of art that disappear and two characters that go on a quest to find them. When the works of art were found, they needed to be incorporated into the replica. The performance also had to include two songs that were accompanied by some type of choreographed movement. This all had to be done with no more than $125. We chose to replicate the Cathedral of Notre Dame using mostly recycled boxes, egg crates, and cardboard rolls. Our three works of art that were stolen wear an artisan necklace, hat, and stained glass. Our characters who went on the quest to find them were Anita Clouseau and Justin Case. The main suspect was the fuchsia feline, but the dancing, singing gargoyles actually steal them from her and get caught in the end.
We're happy to represent Fairfield Stratfield School and the state of Connecticut on our journey out to Michigan. Thanks for your support.
There are 1,440, the superintendent tells me, FTEs, whose sole job is to watch students and catch them doing something marvelous. And then there are nine board members who travel to different schools from time to time and do the same thing. So we hope that teachers and administrators, custodians, all of the staff, and all of the board members bring to our attention students who deserve recognition for the work that they've done, whether it's in kindergarten or in 12th grade. So we congratulate these students for the work that they've done in the honor they bring to our school district by traveling to participate in Odyssey of the Mind. Thank you. Jennifer, you caught them doing something right, so do you have a final comment or not?
Only an invitation to all of the Board of Education reps who are here, that if you have questions about this program, I'm the coordinator at both Stratfield and Tomlinson and working my way into Roger Ludlow, and I would love to answer any questions you have about this program. It truly is what education in many ways is about at its finest.
Our next agenda item is number six, Approval of the Minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7, 2013. Do I have a motion? Okay. Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion on the minutes? Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous, eight people are voting.
One abstention.
And one abstention. It's our custom that if you're not at the meeting, that you abstain from the minutes since you were not at the meeting. Mrs. Iaccona stepped out to make a call to her children, so it's seven in favor and one abstention. Student reports. We have two here. Who wants to go first?
I will. Good evening, board, public. I can't say that much has gone on for Ward, other than for our athletics. Our season is coming to an end, although both our lacrosse teams made states, and our track team is at FCX today, so we don't know the results, but I think they'll do well. Let's see. For clubs, our interact club is collecting lightly-used sports gear for a school in India, and they're doing that drive right now. A lot of different clubs are doing drives. We had our mock crash before prom. That was a huge success. Our drama club put on a mock crash to warn the students about drinking and driving and the dangers of it. So we had the police department and the fire department come, and it was fun. Well, it wasn't fun to see, but I mean, the drama club had fun performing it. But prom was a success. Junior prom was this past weekend, and our senior prom is next Saturday. But junior prom, it was really fun. Everyone had a blast, and the arrangement was really nice. Currently, for our music department, everyone is auditioning for next year. The choir and the chamber singers are auditioning, as well as band members for honors orchestra. We had our Battle of the Houses. This is when we have the three houses in Ward: Townsend, Pequot, and Fitz, and they battle. We have crab walk soccer, jello eating contest, stuff like that. And my house won, Townsend won, so I was really happy about that because I haven't won in a while. But that was a success. And we did an activity in homeroom today. Usually, we have activity period, which all the clubs meet before school on Tuesdays, and we are doing something to try to get everyone else involved, where our homeroom was extended 20 minutes. And this is a chance for everyone who doesn't participate in clubs to participate, and that was a huge success. So that's Ward.
Thank you. Any questions for our Ward representative? Please.
Good evening, board and other guests. Tonight, I'd like to share a few key accomplishments and achievements of Ludlow. This past week, ending on Friday, were our AP tests for the last two weeks. We administered over 700 exams this year, which is Ludlow's most in Ludlow's history, and all the sophomores, juniors, and seniors who took part in these exams are all happy that they're behind us. Additionally, internships for seniors begin on May 30, so not too far from now, and they end the day before graduation, which is June 20 for the seniors. This year, we had an overwhelming amount of candidates for the internships that qualified, and so much so that we needed to make a few calls and see if extra sites could be willing to take on a few more students, so they could gain some real-world education on their topic of choice. This past Saturday, May 18, Summer to Ward, was our junior prom. It was a great success, tons of photos on Facebook and Instagram, and according to all of the participants and the chaperones, it was a fun, safe night. On the sports end of things, Ludlow's boys volleyball moved into the FCAC semifinals, and they're playing Richfield tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. Additionally, the boys' baseball has moved on to the semifinals, and will be playing Danbury at Harbor Yard Arena tomorrow at 7:30. And for the first time in Ludlow's history, the girls' tennis will also be advancing to the FCAC championship, which will be played tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. This concludes tonight's board.
Thank you. Since we were there at the beginning of this prom thing, I'm glad to hear that all things Any questions for our Ludlow representative? Thank you very much. Again, you're welcome to stay or to take off, or to stay for a little bit and take off after a bit. I know that we have the Communications Committee that wishes to make a comment, so I'll start there, and if there are any other liaison or committee reports that are needed other than policy, which will come up later, let me know.
Okay. For the Communications Subcommittee, we are winding down, hopefully, our work, and we'll be giving a presentation to the board at the June 11 meeting. But in the meantime, just wanted to give you a little progress report. Basically, what we did at our last meeting was just kind of come up with a whole list of things that we want to bring to the board, things that we've done. For instance, the PTA visits. The three of us visited all the different PTAs in the district, and we think moving forward, that would be something that we should try to get Board of Ed members to go to perhaps one or two meetings a year. And then also, just in terms of better contact, maybe doing like a quarterly or every, you know, three times a year memo out to the PTAs to kind of say, you know, here's what we discussed, here's what we're going to be discussing, just to give people a heads-up, you know, since a lot of what the board does kind of follows the same schedule from year to year, so just, you know, in terms of the budget season, excuse me, and curriculum and things like that. Then we also thought perhaps to try to set up a town hall meeting, maybe in October. Not that there's ever a really good time of year for that, because everyone's so busy, but we thought that's kind of before budget season, but after the beginning of the school rush. And then just other issues we had was just trying to make sure that all of the board is aware of issues. If something's kind of like boiling over, was a term that one of our members used, to make sure that the whole board. All right, to mention something that's boiling over in the board, and just to make sure that we're all aware of it, and to share that with the members of the Central Office Leadership Team. We're still debating the whole Facebook page, exactly if we want to go that route. If so, what would it be? We did also want to continue to have recognition of students at the start of each meeting, but we need to kind of figure out what parameters we're going to set in terms of, you know, what types of achievements we want to recognize. Then the other things here, we wanted to do a survey once a year, probably at the end of the school year in June, get it out to everyone in town, not just people with children in school, not just the students. Also wanted to have more board member information on the website, like brief bios. There was discussion about perhaps having a PR intern, maybe a college student, to try to get out the word to the other town bodies and to the public about our accomplishments throughout the school year. And then we did have some discussion on the public comment, how we want to move forward with that. That would require a bylaw change, so that's something that we would take up, I guess, probably in November, December, but we'll get into that more in the June meeting. So I guess one thing I would ask board members in terms of the survey, if any of you have any thoughts about questions that you think would be helpful, we thought maybe multiple-choice questions, no more than 10, and then room for individual comments. So if anyone has any questions that they feel definitely should be on this survey, if you want to send them to me in advance of our June 11 meeting, so I can kind of start to put some ideas together. Obviously, it's not written in stone, but just wanted to kind of get the ball rolling on that. So I think that's about everything.
Any questions for the Communications Committee?
I apologize. In the list, I missed it. For whom is the survey intended?
It's for, get out to everyone in town. Yep, everyone, sorry.
The concept of the survey is being fleshed out, though. Yeah. Other questions for the Communications Committee? Hearing none. Riverfield, as you know, was approved by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Iaccona, do you have any comments that you want to make?
No, just that it'll be moving forward to the Board of Finance on June 4, and we would appreciate any board support we could get at that meeting, June 4 at 7:30. Of course, members of the public are invited to attend as well, and we hope you'll speak in favor of the project.
The Fairfield Ludlow High School project was also on the agenda but postponed to a special meeting this coming Wednesday. Time really didn't permit them to do both in the same meeting, and so board members are encouraged to come tomorrow afternoon to show your support for the Fairfield Ludlow High School project, which, if the Board of Selectmen approves, will also be on the June 4 Board of Finance agenda, and then if both of them get approved there, they'll be on the RTM agenda, trying to get on there and approve by the June 30 deadline date that we generally have to ensure that we get timely state reimbursement of funds. Any other liaison reports that people have? Mrs. Brand?
There are a couple. One of the things I just wanted to say, I am sorry, I missed the meeting last week. I was out of town. It would have been nice if I'd been on vacation, but I actually was not. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Advisory Committee, to review the goals and the long-term goal for the board, has been meeting diligently for three hours at a set. Mr. Convertito's been in attendance. Mr. Dwyer has been in attendance, and I will tell you that these are very bright, very passionate people who have put a tremendous amount of time and work. We've made a lot of progress. It has not been easy, but I really actually am very pleased with the group that we have because I think they have brought a tremendous amount to the table. The only other thing I was going to mention was relative to the Cooperative Education Services Board, they also approved their teacher evaluation plan, and if administration would like to have theirs as well, because I know that a lot of them will start out with one, and in subsequent years may review and modify them. So if Dr. Tidal and his administration would like them, I'd be happy to provide theirs as well.
Thank you. Any questions on any of the committee liaison reports? Mr. Fattabine?
I just felt I might be remiss if I don't mention briefly the RTM meeting last night, since I'm the RTM liaison. It was a very lengthy meeting, and they basically, the major item on the agenda was a redrawing of the voting districts. So the RTM approved Nordens last night, which redraw the RTM districts from 10 to 8, having five representatives for a total of 40 representatives. So that may or may not affect future budgets as they progress forward with the reconstitution of the voting districts and the RTM body. So I just wondered, felt that was an important item that should be realized.
Any other comments that people have to make? Okay, on to the old business, and the first item on the old business is approval of the secondary math curriculum, grades 6 through 10. As you know, we...
Point of order, you actually skipped one of the items on the agenda.
Oh, Superintendent's Report. My deepest apologies.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brand. My deepest apologies.
Thank you.
The Superintendent's Report.
Actually, I want to reserve my time because the first meeting in June has been a time when I give a reasonably extensive report on our progress this year, on our initiatives. As you know, we had a lot of them, and so I'd like to reserve a little longer-than-usual Superintendent's Report at the June 11 meeting to review each of those and take any questions or comments board members might have on them at that meeting. So just preview of coming attractions, but nothing else tonight.
Okay. My apologies for missing that line item. Thank you, Mrs. Brand, for bringing that up. So now on to old business, approval of the secondary math curriculum. You'll see that there are three motions that are on the table. One relates to the curriculum, and then there are two, no, and then there's one that relates to the textbook. So there are two motions on the table. We'll take those motions separately. So can I have a motion? The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the secondary math curriculum, grades 6 through 10. Mrs. Iaccona and Mrs. Brand are seconding it. Discussion among the board. Mr. Lu?
Thank you. I have a few more questions, if I may. May I ask? Yeah. Thank you. In regards to the surveys, I know you showed us the teacher surveys, and you showed us the parent surveys in terms of the textbook, but I understand that there was either an additional survey or more questions to the surveys regarding if the math was working, if the current curriculum or the pilot that was working for them, were they getting tutoring? And I would really love to see all of that information, please.
Certainly. We just, we don't have it with us.
No, no.
But I, there were, I think, I believe a total of four questions, if I remember correctly.
Great.
And we can send that to you.
Super. It would be great if you could send it with the Friday package, so that the public can also take a look at it if they want to. Thank you. So, excuse me, one second. I just want to go back to this training about, you know, there was CPM provided, six days of training, thus the $13,000. Was there anything that came from using these other textbooks? In terms of...
Well, nothing yet, because the board has, obviously, has not approved them. If the board approves the textbooks and we purchase them, the textbook companies provide professional development at no cost.
At no cost.
That's correct.
So, again, I'm just puzzled by this. Why does this, why did the CPM have a cost?
Mr. Lu?
Yeah.
Our first motion is on the curriculum. I think when we get...
The curriculum math, it's all, isn't it all the same?
Mr. Lu? No, there's two different motions, so if you have questions on the textbooks, perhaps when the second motion comes up, we could take that, if you would.
Okay. So then back to the curriculum.
Thank you.
So after all of this, we got to the, the pilot was deemed not successful by you all.
I don't know if I agree with that statement.
Oh, no? Okay. Oh, no? Okay, but?
And again, Mr. Liu, we piloted the textbook.
Oh, all right, so then I'll wait for more questions.
Your comments might, I just want to get them related to the correct motion. Okay. Mrs. Brand, you had a comment, and then Mrs. Cannelli.
Just a couple of questions. When I went looking through the materials, I can see that the pacing is different, but what I wanted to know is two things. One, if the pacing is different at different age levels, because we're teaching some of the same material with respect to the Algebra I in grades 8 and then the Algebra I in grade 9, what I'm wondering is, well, at least in my experience with my children, there's quite a huge leap when we go from 8th to 9th. And is there a developmental piece that you were addressing separately that I didn't see in the document because they are different ages? And also, is there a difference in depth?
I'll answer that, and I'll let you join in. Let me just, if I could, just preface my response by saying, in the Common Core standards, they have incorporated a high number of topics and expected understanding of those topics in the middle school, more than we've ever had before.
Right.
So for a student to take Algebra I in the 8th grade, they're considered advanced, and to get to that point, instead of overwhelming them in the 7th grade, we moved one or two topics, one topic, one unit, to the 8th grade Algebra I course. So the Algebra I course in 8th grade is identical in terms of Algebra I to what they would take in 9th grade, but there is an additional unit that we've put into 8th grade because we felt as though by putting it in the 7th grade, it would have just been too overwhelming for the students who are already taking a much more rigorous course.
So it's actually more, even more condensed in the 8th grade than it had been previously?
Yes, yes.
So by that, am I assuming that you mean that there is more depth than at that level because it is an advanced student in 8th grade who is taking that math course?
Yes, and yes, absolutely, and we would, remember, the Common Core is a minimum. We can always go beyond the Common Core, and we will for our advanced students.
Right.
And so although the topics may look the same in 8th grade algebra as they do in 9th grade algebra, the amount, the depth that we can pursue and the level of instruction, I would expect to be much more intense for our 8th grade students who are considered our advanced students.
And my?
Or 7th grade, if you're taking Algebra I in 7th grade.
And my last question, again, because of the pace, but quite frankly, just because of the nature of math in particular, when we have the summative assessments, which for, I know a lot of people, we do summative, formative, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the summative is like your midterm test as opposed to quizzes along the way. So what I'm asking you, are those standardized now throughout the district, that we're looking at pretty much the same kind of testing that's going on in the continuity from class to class, school to school?
Yes, one of the initiatives that I've been responsible for is to have those common assessments developed by the curriculum leaders. So do you want to speak briefly about what you've done?
That's a lot of work that we have spent over here the last, probably a year and a half, really identifying and standardizing our assessments, I mean, especially at the middle school, and then developing, continuing it at the high school. I mean, at the high school, we do have our common midterms and finals, but as we, we're also going to be helped developing our additional common assessments along the way.
I guess my only question to follow up to that is, that's the good news. The bad news is that you also want to be careful because you don't want to necessarily have kids sharing tests. I'm assuming that you're going to be changing the content. And to that end, particularly with math, because it's so sequential, are you giving feedback after a quiz, after a test, as to what kinds of mistakes students are making and letting parents know what some of those mistakes are if they ask? Because they're your biggest supporters, and they'll be more than happy to say, oh, you need to work on your computation. Good, we can handle that. Because I think that would be very helpful.
Well, that's a, that's a key component of assessment, is getting that feedback. I mean, if I give an assessment without feedback, then what's the good?
Exactly, that's kind of my point.
So that, we really stress, for any assessment, for any teacher along the way, to really give that feedback to help students, because any assessment is a learning opportunity.
Right. If I could just add to that, in addition to giving feedback to students, the common assessments also give us feedback. Right. Because obviously, a curriculum doesn't have a lot of value unless it's implemented. And our next stage, if the board approves this curriculum, is to go into the implementation phase where we have to monitor that all the students, and no matter what school or what class they're in, are receiving the same curriculum, and common assessments allow us to do that. And demonstrating progress, hopefully, too. Right.
May I move on to Mrs. Cannelli, or do you have a?
Nope, I'm fine.
Mrs. Cannelli.
On the topic of assessments, what latitude are teachers given to go beyond even the agreed-upon common assessments?
No, that's, that is still encouraged. We're not demanding every single test along the way for, for, to give feedback. I mean, we have your formative, and your summative, we still want to have teachers at any point to give some sort of feedback and assessment during their instructional time in the classroom.
Okay. And is, because this is a new curriculum, which assessments, I mean, are, this would be an office discussion, obviously, but have you committed to which assessments you're going to key in on in terms of assessing how the curriculum is proceeding, how, you know, the implementation of it is going? I mean, I'm more familiar with what, you know, the elementary school will have their blue ribbon, et cetera, but what is it that you're using with this?
Well, that will go in as, once we get this approved, we, Blue Ribbon has actually given us kind of assessments that we can administer also three times a year to really kind of help judge the success and strengths and weaknesses of the curriculum throughout the year.
If you recall, when I talked about the Pearson text, I mentioned that I thought one of the strengths was the very rich online assessment capabilities that we get with that. And so we can develop benchmark assessments through that, and we, at some point, we do expect teachers to use the same assessments, or we will have difficulty determining implementation. But certainly, there are many opportunities for teachers to develop their own assessments, both formative and summative in the course. So we'll use the, some of the online components available for Pearson, Blue Ribbon is only, goes through middle schools, it's not available to us in the high school, as well as the assessments that the math teachers and Paul work on together to develop. And some of those are going to be aligned to the S-Back, so that students see that type of test before they actually have to take that assessment.
Right. And so I assume that obviously, you'd be looking at the Blue Ribbon results of even this year and prior years, so that you're seeing, you know, what direction we're moving in. Last question I had, and this would not be a reason I'm voting against the curriculum, but I raise it as a topic because I'm wondering what your administrative philosophy is on this, and that's the levels. There are only two levels. Fairfield did not used to only have that. And I'm wondering how you see that as being, I mean, people don't have, forget about other subjects, that's a topic for another day, but in math, people have no problem saying, I'm good at math, I'm not good at math. And so the levels are inherently obvious to people in terms of a need. My question is concerning only having two, and I was wondering, what is your philosophy in that? Because we moved away from something to come to this, and I was wondering how you see this achieving better proficiency and better rigor as opposed to what we'd been previously doing? Because obviously, this new curriculum is a renewed commitment to only those two levels.
Well, I was not here when there were three levels in Fairfield, but I have spoken to people about it, and my understanding is, it was not successful. What I always worry about with more than two levels is that when students end up in that lowest level, they can never move out of it. And we always want to make sure that we're not, that we are encouraging students, we're not presenting barriers to students. And so I've been following the levels very closely, especially in Algebra I, and we have that workshop that we've added to 9th grade Algebra I for additional support. And in working with the headmasters and the housemasters, Paul and the math teachers, I believe that the two levels are meeting the needs of our students. We are providing advancement and intensive subject matter to the students who can handle it, to the advanced students, but we're also allowing all the other students to work at a level that they have to work on in order to be proficient, in order to do well in state assessments and graduate from high school. And we will always support them along the way. It's the students who are not in the honors level who need the most support normally, and we've built in ways to do that. We have a very good support system. I'm forgetting the initials, S?
MRT.
No, not MRT at the high school.
SRBI.
SRBI, the SRBI process, and called EIP at the middle school, has really grown this year in its use, and we've, they've really done a very good job in the schools of identifying students who are struggling and giving them those Tier 2 interventions, as well as helping teachers continue the Tier 1 interventions in the classrooms, the differentiating in the classroom. And I believe that that process will continue to strengthen into the next year, and will continue to be able to support the students, and that's what's most important.
Thank you. Anybody else, before I go back to a second bite at the apple, if you will? If not, Mrs. Brand, and then we'll go to the public.
I apologize, I did have two more, and I forgot. Do you have a rough idea of when the S-Back results will be in?
Well, we're not giving the S-Back until 2014, 15.
I thought you folks took a?
Oh, we, that was, yeah, there are no, that was a, they, what they did was field-tested the questions. We will not, that was at Roger Ludlow Middle School in 8th grade math. We do not get results for individual students on that. They were testing the questions.
Just the school, right?
And I don't know what, if anything, we'll hear after that.
All right. And my next question has to do something related to that. We had CPM. By your account, it didn't work, and where I have a?
Different phrase, but?
Okay, well, actually, that's a quote. But really, where I'm going with this is more important, far more important, and that is, oh, how are we going to fill in the gap? It is part of this curriculum piece because we're moving these kids from the 8th grade into the 9th grade math, and do you have any plan to have a program or a curriculum supplement for the summer that's going to address where you think the students didn't do as well?
Well, remember, the CPM wasn't a curriculum. CPM was a textbook. The curriculum was still taught, that the approved curriculum document that we're operating on this current year was still addressed in all of the 8th grade Algebra I classes. So students received everything they needed to in terms of instruction, and by all accounts of ways of measuring, they did well. If any individual students need support as they go forward, the teachers will do that, and if the teachers need help doing that, we'll go into the SRBI process in the high school. But we will, we always monitor long range. We always follow students, we follow cohorts of students.
Right.
To see how they do, so we'll follow these, just as we follow other students. But they received the curriculum they were supposed to receive last year, they did it using a different textbook.
Right. I guess what I was concerned about is to make sure that they were going to be ready, and then what you're telling me, there's no data, no testing that you have to date that suggests that these students won't be fully able to walk into the 9th grade math program and not have any problems.
That's what our data is showing us, and that's what the teachers' anecdotal data is telling us, the teachers' reports as well.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from people before we go to the public? Okay, and I remind the public of the same comment I made with Mr. Liu, who very much appreciated, stayed on topic, and that is that this is a discussion on the curriculum, and then once we pass that motion, then we will get on to the textbook, which I presume will also generate other public comments. Any public comment on the curriculum, the motion that is in front of the board at the Okay, I'm not an auctioneer, so I'm not going to go, say, going once, going twice, but, okay. Back to the board, any other final comment, comments from the board?
No more comments.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the curriculum as presented in the motion, say aye, and raise your hand. It is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. On to the second motion, approval of the secondary math resources, grades 6 to 10. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the secondary math textbooks, grades 6 through 10, per the memorandum dated April 26, 2013, and that was enclosure number two from the prior meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iacono and Mr. Convertito? So discussion on this motion. Mr. Liu, you had a question?
Thank you. So I was talking about why CPM to pilot costs us $13,000 and the new books do not. And I just, I don't think I got a clear answer to this last time, but maybe you could go through it with me again.
We don't, we do not own the CPM books. They were loaned to us. And so the fee covered the fact that they, in loaning us the books, they provided professional development. And were there six sessions of professional development? So the $13,000 we paid was for that. The books are going to be boxed up and sent back at the end of June.
So why didn't we do that with these textbooks?
Well, we'd like to buy them. I mean, normally, we buy textbooks as part of the cycle of curriculum and textbook review, and then in another six or seven years, when it's math's turn again to come forward, we come forward with any curriculum revisions, and also if we need to purchase new books at that time.
I guess what I'm trying to understand, and I know this is going to be dealt with in policy with piloting, but it just seems to me to be inconsistent in that you've got one book that you decided to pilot, and you spent $13,000 on it, and you decided it's not the right book. You go and choose these books, you didn't do a pilot, they're not costing us anything. Why?
Well, it's not true.
The books will cost us.
Well, no, they'll cost us, but we're not paying for any, any time to be explained, any professional development time or loaning time. We didn't do a pilot on these books. What's the difference? Why would you do that with one and not with the other?
Am I correct that if we had purchased CPM, the professional development would have been for free?
Yes.
Okay, so it's in the purchase that the professional development comes free? We were essentially taking it as a loaner, so we had to pay.
Right, and so we don't, and they don't have the same kind of rules with this other book?
I have not known any large publishers to make that offer, in my experience.
And again, I guess the question is on consistency, is if you're going to spend not just money but time, and this is our students' time as well, district-wide of the entire middle school to use CPM, and you are doing a pilot, why wouldn't you do a pilot with this other one? I mean, what makes you feel like this?
Mr. Liu, out of appreciation for the staff, you've asked that question two or three times.
I know, but I haven't gotten the answer yet.
You may not have gotten the answer that you want, but they have given an answer.
I didn't think I got the answer at all, but anyway. All right. You know, I do want to say that I find this kind of puzzling, I find it puzzling also that, you know, there doesn't seem to be any, like I said, consistency. Why try one book first, spend that amount of money, not do another one? Wouldn't you maybe try the other books first since they don't cost anything, and weed them out that way instead of just spending the money, especially at a time when we're looking at every single dollar? I will be supporting this math textbook because I do believe it is better, and I think it's been a long and difficult and expensive journey getting piloting of CPM to this point, and I think we have to really learn from this. We owe a great deal of gratitude to a group of parents who were labeled the math moms, who took the time to study CPM. The math proposals and this administration originally put forth, they stood up, they spoke out when nobody else would, and they were vilified for doing it. And I want to say to them, thank you, thank you for your time.
Please.
You know, we are a system in a country that's based on speaking out, so it really is, it's, to me, it's just very sad that, just because any group in our population, I think I just, a little latitude.
I think you're straying off the textbook.
Yeah, but it's about the same thing.
Motion.
Is that they should be embraced. Thank you, Mr. Chair. They should be embraced instead of vilified for having an opinion and for getting and taking the time and getting involved with our system, you know? And what's really unfortunate, I think, is our action as a board. Instead of responding immediately, it took us like four to five months.
Mr. Liu, now you're getting into comments about this board, so please.
Should I say them for later, or should I say them now?
Self-evaluation meetings, yes.
No, 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 I'm just, I think they are pertinent to what we're talking about. I'm not singling out anyone, it's my opinion about what we should try to do better.
Yes, I understand, but I think I need to rule you out of order if you stray further from the motion on the table, which is approval of these particular textbooks.
Well, okay, so then let's see if I can work this a little bit. I'll try to, I'll try to stay within the confines, because we were a part of this process, and we were a part of the unfortunate fiasco that was caused by the CPM book and the miscommunication. But we, as a board, could have stopped that. We could have stopped factions and parents fighting each other. So I want us to say, yes.
That's it. I've given you as much latitude as I think I can. Any comments other than on the textbook that people want to make? Mr. Fattabey?
The motion in front of us, which is the textbook. The textbook, all right. So you have a comment on the textbook?
Yes, please.
All right, I had an opportunity to review these textbooks, and they are specifically designed to the Common Core. It's really obvious that that's exactly what they are. I was satisfied, in a sense, that it had the subject content there. I was satisfied, in a sense, that it had the subject content there. They do progress in a common theme, each of the textbooks, in the way the layout is and in the way they progress. There's activity sections, there's lesson sections, and there's practice sections, basically. And I'm satisfied myself that the textbook is appropriate. It has the subject content in the curriculum. A lot matter, a lot, I think, is going to be derived from how the content in those textbooks is taught. That's always the factor. A textbook, a math textbook, textbook, because it's math and somewhat definitive, has factual content that is not too disputable. So a lot depends on how these textbooks are utilized, more so than the textbook itself. But I'm confident the textbook has the subject matter content to complement the curriculum and hopefully be successful in achieving student learning, and can be done, and I hope that's what is done.
Thank you. Other comments from board members before we go to the public? Other comments from board members before we go to the public? Hearing none. On to the public on the motion that is in front of the board concerning the approval of the secondary math textbooks per the memorandum dated April 26, which are identified in a memorandum that was part of the public session at the prior meeting. Please step forward and state your name and your address. Thank you. And remember, two minutes is our timekeeper.
Nancy Habberly, 30 Duck Farm Road. I just want to congratulate and thank Mr. Liu for his comments about the math curriculum. Thank you for standing up. It takes people like that to speak up for our children and for this community.
Susie Amisca, 123 Rygate Road. I really want to thank the parents who I feel were integral in moving this administration in this direction, to being involved in the textbook selection process. We started out the pilot program process in a rather dismal place, and I think that if it had not been for the parents speaking out, I don't know that the reception would have been as welcoming by the administration, and that is disappointing.
You're getting close to commenting about the administration as opposed to commenting on the textbook.
Okay. I appreciate that we are going in a direction away from CPM, and that makes me very thankful. What does concern me, though, is the distance between where we are in that textbook and where our children have landed after using a piloted textbook. My concern is the how that was discussed, and the resource requirements seem to not necessarily get to where we need to be. And I ask politely and respectfully that as we go forth with this, that we're cognizant of making sure that, A, the parents are notified as we proceed forward so that we, too, can work with you in this process and not create an adversarial relationship. I'd like to think that's behind us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Nadine Izet, 345 Mill Hill Terrace. After one year of pilot with CPM, it was decided that CPM was out because it did not meet Fairfield's expectations. We would like to see and understand where it fell short. A standard Algebra I assessment should be performed to evaluate what algebra skills are currently missing for those children to succeed in Algebra II. Furthermore, because this pilot went on for so long, Central Office should offer free-of-charge remedial clauses this summer for the children who failed the math test. I have some friends who are currently investigating and feel that it's a charge, a supercharge in addition of having tutored their kids to have to pay for summer school. This pilot went for too long, and I think it's unfair for parents to pay for remedial math this summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Hi. Tricia Donovan, 164 Tanner Drive, and I am a math mom. And I would just like to say that thank you, thanks to the board. Even though I'm a loud math mom, I was included on the middle school math textbook review committee, and I want to thank everyone for that. I was very glad to be a part of that, and I felt that the teachers were extremely open with the parents and shared a lot about the information that they needed to get from the textbooks, and we were able to share with them as parents what we were looking for. But the first question that was asked by one of the parents in the committee was, are we here because you were forced to accept us, or are we here because you want us to be a part of this? And that is still a question that's yet to be answered. And I hope that even though parents have been criticized for taking stand and being involved in the math, that we will institutionalize the inclusion of parents and collaborate with them. We are professionals. We are educated. We are used to collaborating. We're used to being heard, and we are problem solvers. And even though the educational establishment talks a lot about 21st century skills, who better than the working parents of today to identify what those working skills are and to help you get there? So please, look at your parents as a free resource and incorporate them into all your processes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? I don't see anybody coming forward. Any comments from the board? Hearing none. I'll look for a motion, the vote on that the Board of Education approved the secondary math textbooks, grades six to 10, per the memorandum dated April 26, 2013. Please raise your hand. One, two, three. We have an unanimous vote. For those of you who may be interested, approval of textbooks require six votes instead of the majority of five votes, so I'm happy that we have all nine votes in favor of the textbook. I want to thank the staff as well as the parents in this board for a year-long discussion on math. You know, it's a lot, even though sometimes it was difficult, I would rather be talking about curriculum and academic subjects than budgets or stuff like that. So I appreciate the work that all of the staff did. And again, before we get off the academics, there's one person in our audience that recently attended a graduation. Yes, I am going to do this.
And I ratted you out.
Anna Katia Leonard is, I am sure her family was the first one to address her as doctor, but we would not want this board to miss the opportunity for us collectively to congratulate you on that achievement and to have you stand up. Stand up. I may be a board member, but I am a parent most of all in our, we get to embarrass people, especially our children. Now, on to the third item, on to this-
More thing on math.
You have one, oh, you have a comment on math.
Preview of a coming attraction. Just so you think, don't think we're done with math. This only was through geometry. So next year, you get to dive into trigonometry, calculus, and assorted other discrete math topics. So math is not finished, and we'll be back.
Yeah. I will be the first to admit that I avoided those classes in high school, and our superintendent is going to make me take those classes.
I think you can't spell them. You shouldn't have to vote on them.
That's true. That's true. Okay. If, no further comments. On to the next agenda item, which the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommended budget adjustments for 2013, 2014. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iakona, Mr. Carey has seconded it. Open for board discussion. As you know, the list was handed out at the last meeting, and so it should be in front of you. And as I mentioned, we will take conversation, and if a board member wishes to make an amendment on any particular line item, we will do so as a board and not go directly to public comment. And then if the amendment does not pass, well, then it's a moot issue. If it does pass, it becomes part of the main motion, and then, of course, then the public can comment on, on the main motion with or without that item. And I will assume that Mrs. Moncel will keep, be our scorekeeper relative to what items are in or out. Having said that, Mrs. Brand.
This is more, I think, a point of order. When I looked at the document I have that has the proposals from the superintendent title regarding budget adjustments, we are voting on a budget. We're not voting on programs. And as such, I believe we should have corresponding line items that correspond to these changes because otherwise, we don't know where they fell. We are the only board that has the right to vote line by line, and quite honestly, we have an expectation from the superintendent when we have quarterly financial reports to assess whether or not we're on target and where we are. And if we don't have a mutual understanding when we vote as to what that looks like, we won't know where we are. So we need to know where the money's being spent. That's part of our fiscal responsibility. So again, if we want to move this forward, it is not a budget adjustment. It, to me, is a program adjustment, and then I would want us to, at a later date, do the actual budget adjustment so we all know where the lines are.
Yeah. In the last two times that we've had to do this, the format of the presentation and the vote has been exactly as it's been presented. You might have a program that may end up on three or four different lines, and so I will rule that it is in order to vote it in this format. And if board members feel that a different format is appropriate, well, then somebody would have to, quote, "challenge the ruling of the chair" and get five votes to support that. But at the moment, we're going to proceed on, this is an appropriate format that matches the last two times this board had to do this, when the $2.8 million was cut before I joined the board and when the $250,000 was cut, and we voted on it at that time. It was exactly in the same format. Mr. Fadabey?
All right. I want to try and speed this up a little.
Okay.
I'm making an effort. It may not be very popular, but I'll make an effort. I was really troubled by a lot of these cuts. There's no question about it. I was really troubled by a lot of these cuts. There's no question about it. The problem I have typically is we're having difficult budget cycles and present, and budget approvals. I don't know if that's going to typically go away, but what I don't like is, is that we always tend to cut program, and we cut what we offer the students. That's what I don't like about this. We have a good district. I want to maintain our district. I want to keep it good, and I want to still provide the programs that make us a good district. And it's, I know, these are the areas in which a superintendent recommends to cut. I know he didn't want to make these cuts either. Nobody wants to make these cuts. So what I did was I tried to compile a list of things that I didn't want to cut, and then try and find in the budget elsewhere where I can make up that difference. So if I may, I will pass a sheet around and try and explain it. I probably should explain it before I pass it because no one's going to look at it, or not, they won't listen to my explanation.
Here, I'll sun it down for you. Do you have a sheet?
I got one.
You have one of these?
Yeah. Basically, what I had done in my list-
I did, thank you.
Which by no means may not reach consensus at all, but on the left-hand portion of the list, I took these, the portions of the superintendent's recommended budget that I didn't feel I can support. And it's the lower part where it says department program, central office, and then it goes down the first column. And it's, I really didn't want to support the elimination of the gifted program, the middle school gifted program. So what I had done was the original amount that the superintendent recommended to eliminate it was $83,000. I would rather have reduced that amount and perhaps maybe try and present the program in some fashion with half of that amount. Now, I realize it's difficult. I realize nobody's going to want it, but if you eliminate the program, nobody's going to be served. So at least if you maybe try and reduce it to half of the program of that portion, at least some of the students will be served. The other element was the assured music experience in grade four. I am sort of a big advocate of assured experiences in the district because that's a common theme or thread that everyone in the district has and can share, and one which unites the district, and I sort of like assured experiences. So I was reluctant to completely eliminate the assured experience, but I do realize that one could maybe put on some assured experience that is at less cost. So I reduced that to $8,000 by half. The athletic rental charge at the high school, I don't, I'm not a fan of that. I think athletes is an important part of the curriculum or an important part of the educational experience, and I don't necessarily like to have to charge students to that. I think it's a barrier to entry. It's something that may escalate and be detrimental, so I included that in my things I would not support. Grade seven gifted testing, I included that since I would certainly try and keep some of the elementary gifted program, therefore you should test for it, so I kept the testing for the grade seven. The Fairfield Arts for Youth, that is, I believe, cosponsored by the, or co-funded by the PTA, so therefore you're really getting one whole benefit for the cost of half, so I didn't think it made sense to get rid of half of it to eliminate the whole thing, so I'd rather keep that in there. And in essence, we're getting a cost share, so we're getting more benefit than we're actually paying for. So I would like to keep that, plus, you know, there is some importance to sort of have some breadth and opportunity in the arts is one of those things that I think should still be included. The charge for overtime to all user groups, I, again, reduced that to only $50,000, thinking that we can, that there should be some way to identify some of the users that should pay and some of the ones that shouldn't. I philosophically have a trouble charging some nonprofits money that are associated with the town to use town facilities. In others, I think it's, there are the town's facilities. They're open to the public. They're certainly for educational purposes and the students, but since the town pays all the bills, there should be some benefit the town receives, and some of the nonprofits, I think, are appropriately included and not having to pay for the overtime charges. So if you look at the bottom of that, which is now the second column, which is the original amount proposed, has a total, total amount that has to be now found somewhere else. That was $261,600. So the challenge now is where do you find that other money? And I agree, that's a very big challenge. A lot of the problem with our budget is that a lot is fixed cost. A lot, we have little discretion over how we, how we spend the money, and it's fixed. I think that's something that may have to be addressed at another day, but I think unless we want to erode our program continually with the difficulty of getting all the budgets we need passed, we're going to continually erode program, and we have to start addressing our fixed costs in some fashion in the future. But not being able to do that now, the question is, where do you find the money? So I took a look at the budget book fairly closely, as close as I could, and I tried to eliminate the areas which are not desirable but in which I felt could best not directly affect program and would, and admittedly will make some of the budget tight, but at least I'd rather try and provide program to all the students and try and eliminate some of the costs in areas that are going to be painful and maybe compromise some of the things we can do but not directly affect program and make us all work a little more efficiently, a little more, in essence, challengingly. But I believe we have a dedicated group of people in the staff that are resourceful, hardworking. We have a very effective, and I think a very good superintendent who knows numbers very well, works very hard, and believe is up to the task to try and make this work. We're all trying to make this work, and we're trying to make it work in a way that doesn't compromise the educational experience of the student, and that's my goal. And it's a tough goal because the budget is not what we want it to be. So I don't know if I have to explain where I took the cuts, but by actually identifying the budget book, and we can go there, and they're a portion of the amount.
Can I interrupt just for a moment?
You certainly may.
I probably should have asked you to make this as an official motion before you argued the motion, so I presume that you're leading to make this to a motion, to amend-
I'm making a motion. As I finish my, my effort to be persuasive in the motion I'm going to present.
I'll give you latitude.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mrs. Iakona came not well-prepared, she forgot her pen, which you gave me, but I also don't have my budget book. Does anyone have an extra one?
So first, first, I can, I can handle the-
I will try and explain very clearly if you'd like.
I got a pen. I got my glasses out of the car, and now I have my budget book. Thank you, and I deeply apologize.
Do you need a pen?
Oh, no, I have the pen. I just don't have the budget book. Oh, good. I wasn't the only one.
Okay.
I will, I'll, I'll-
Please continue.
It should be self-explanatory if I can do, if I can try and speed this up.
Please continue.
I'll try, I'll try and be quick. Business services, budget book page 60. So if you look at page 60, budget service- So if you look at Page 60, Budget Services, Object Code 305, Department 64. I don't have a line item there because the total Business Services account is, for the proposed budget of 1314, is $401,000. So those are things like enrollment projections, technical consulting, legal services, and record retention. So Legal Services itself has a budget of $300,000. Technical Consulting has $75,000. And Enrollment Projections, you know, $3,000. So if we are trying to tighten our belt and try and limit some of the litigation we have possibly or our legal services, try and not do some technical consulting. I agree, these are not desirable. But these are areas which we may be able to manage more effectively and try and trim at least $26,000 out of those costs so as not to affect program. Is that going to be difficult? Possibly. A lot of that is projection and speculation as to what it might cost. But we should make an effort before we cut program. I agree, it's going to be controversial. Page 71 of the budget book. Mileage reimbursement. It's Page 71, Object Code 319, Department 64, Line 54-500. I have to get what the total amount was originally, which I should have written down.
Forty-five, 305, is that what you're looking for?
Uh, 319.
I think it's...
Forty-five thousand, 305?
Yeah.
Forty-seven thousand, 305.
All right. So the --
Oh, yeah, the total, forty-seven, 305.
So the effort to cut $5,000 out of that budget in maybe reducing some of the mileage we put on, maybe just don't go out for the -- to look at something or try and cut back a little bit, I thought that was reasonable. I realize, nobody likes to cut these budgets and there's things you don't want to do.
Go ahead.
But five thou -- you know, everyone's got to suffer a little bit, and that may be what we can do. The other item, Instructional Services, $15,000. That's the Budget Book, Page 71 again, Line 321, Department 60, Line Item 54-1710. The total amount's $90,000. It's an increase of $29,000 this year. I thought, you know, perhaps we can cut back a little in some of the staff development, if possible. And the $15,000 off that budget is something that we can maybe strive for and achieve and work on. The next one is hourly webmaster. That's Budget Book Page 58. Object Code 129. Department 60.
Sixty-five?
I think.
On your sheet, you show it as sixty-five.
Sixty-five, excuse me. Sixty -- it should be -- you're right, sixty-five. I'm sorry, I misread. Line Item 52-301. The webmaster's budgeted for $30,000. I agree, a website is certainly desirable. A good website should be what we want. But can we afford it to be as good as we want it to be? $5,000 to cut from that, maybe we try and get a very efficient webmaster and a very skillful webmaster, and maybe they can do it for slightly less. The Wage and Benefit Reserve on Page 58 of the Budget Book. Object Code 131. Department 64, Line Item 52-100. That Wage and Benefit Reserve is $700,000. I agree that, you know, some of those may be committed because we have certain contracts. Some of those contracts are in negotiation. Perhaps we can work a little harder to get some of the wages and benefit concessions that may be meaningful to the district since we are in a very tough budgetary year. So I thought we can try and reduce that by a $10,000 amount and be a little more aggressive in maybe what can -- what -- how much we can save in wages and benefit negotiations. The next item is paraprofessionals. That's paid the Budget Book. This is -- I have two pages. Seventeen is the page in which tells you the total amount, I believe. Page 128 tells you how many paraprofessionals there are. There are 146.6 paraprofessionals budgeted. So I came out to an approximate average salary based on the total number versus the total budget number. And I hope my math is correct. It's approximately $20,000 each. So I, you know, in an effort to find money, maybe we can do with two less paraprofessionals. I agree, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be compromise some things maybe. But it's better than cutting out complete programs, I thought. So each paraprofessional may have to be a little, you know, work a little harder and try and accomplish what they want -- the district wants to accomplish. But instead of eliminating complete programs, I thought everyone takes a little hit and maybe we can't do as much or at least we do most of it. So that's $40,000. The next item is Budget Books, Page 72. It's postage. Department 64. Line Item 54-640. That total budget is $110,000 for postage system, $110,900 approximately. So I thought that -- I know we're emailing a lot more. There's ways in which maybe you can avoid postage. Postage overall is going down. So I thought that perhaps you can think of creative ways to get things out without using postage to the name of 10 percent, $10,000. It may have to be managed a little more efficiently, try and manage not mail out everything and find different ways to distribute those -- that information. The website may be a good area for some of that stuff. The Recruitment Expenses. Budget Book 72. Line Item -- or Object Code 325. Department 66, Line Item 54-650. The total recruitment expense budget is $26,000. Being the economy what it is, I would imagine to me it takes less effort to recruit people than it had in the past possibly. And I said, maybe we can try and do that for $6,000 less. So I took $6,000 off that $26,000 budget. The other item is Capital Expenses. That's Budget Book Page 90. Object Code 501. Department 64. I think that's right. Right. Those are a series of equipment, different outlays, with a total budget of $101,000. So I thought maybe some of those things can be deferred, some of those things we don't purchase, and maybe we can try and get some savings out of that. I realize it's not -- it's not easy. And I realize it may not get some of the things that is desirable. But this is really -- I was really difficult. It's a difficult choice. And I'm trying to save some program. The next one is Capital Technology. Page 90 as well. Object Code 503. Department 65. The total technology capital outlay budget is $1.3 million. And I agree, some of these things aren't necessarily specific. But hopefully, there's $25,000 of things we can defer and not buy out of that amount. And I realize that there's also a big hit for some of the computers, but that was in the neighborhood of $110,000 under the technology as well. But maybe we could find ways to save that amount of money or maybe eliminate certain things and buy them in the following budget year. The next item is Budget Book 154. And this is the Maintenance Projects. This was difficult too because one does not want to defer maintenance. So the only one that I could really select out of there was the replacement of the hallway ceiling at Jennings. Now, they must still have a ceiling. It may not be desirable, but maybe you don't want to replace it this year because we really don't have much money. So I was going to suggest that for $6,000. So basically, if you add all those up, together with just the reduced portions of the other proposed items, the total comes at $200,061,600, which was the amount necessary to keep those programs that I originally identified in my first column. So this was -- I don't like this. It was problematic for me. And I know it's going to be a challenge to couple some of those other items and work around it and try and find the money for it and try and accomplish what you want to accomplish. But my goal is not to have a continuing erosion of program and to try and save the program. So that's my rationale. That's what I tried to accomplish. I know it's not going to be popular. I know it's not going to be -- there's going to be problems with all of this.
Yep.
But I would move now.
Okay. Thank you.
I would move now to amend Dr. Title's, the superintendent's recommended budget adjustment of 5/7 -- May 7, 2013, so as to supplement the items on my sheet dated May 21, 2013, where indicated.
And I'll say that the first column is Column A and the second column, that is, it's replacing Column A with Column B. Is that correct? That's what your intent is?
My intent is to -- the intent would be to agree or have Dr. Title's proposed recommended reductions as presented by him. Except to remove the Column A.
Yep.
And insert Column B.
Correct. So do we have a second for that motion? Mrs. Cannelli seconds that motion. Now, I'm going to say, you've had your discussion. So, Mrs. Cannelli, you seconded it.
First of all, Mr. Fadabine, thank you for your work. This is painstaking. I expect no less from you. By -- I agree in bulk with a great deal of what you've done here. There are two notable points that I would disagree with, but may I do that as part of the person who seconded the motion?
That's why I turned to you.
Okay. The two points with which I would disagree. I disagree with the restoring of Grade Seven gifted testing. At that point, I don't think that is money well-spent. I'd rather put that $9,000 towards bringing back the hourly webmaster. I think that's going to be -- that would be a tough place to pinch pennies on. The other aspect with which I disagree is cutting the middle school gifted program in half. It's only a .4 as it is right now. I think to switch that to a .2 would be -- would truly render the program almost meaningless. And that's certainly -- that was the number one -- my number one priority on these. That was the first one I wanted to bring up. And I could speak more to that later. But those would be the only two I disagree with. Otherwise, I'm basically in agreement with what you have done thus far.
So for the purposes of process, once the motion maker and the seconder makes a comment, I will ask Dr. Title to make comments for the benefit of the board and then go on to Mrs. Iacono. Asked for to comment, Mr. Carey, and then Mr. Conde.
I just have a quick point of clarification and make sure we're talking about the same thing here. My understanding, and maybe my understanding is incorrect, that the middle school gifted program is $123,000, $40,000 plus 83.
Yeah. He may -- Dr. Title may clarify that.
I just want to make sure that we're talking about apples to apples here. So cutting that in half would actually be $60,000 and change, $6150 versus...
So, Dr. Title, comments on the proposed amendment.
Yeah. This is exactly why we asked you to send us your ideas ahead of time. So on the gifted program, let's just be sure what is out there. The current program, as it currently exists, with 1.2 positions in it, there is a $40,000 addition in the budget that I recommended, that we expand the program. Okay? So if you cut, if you want to have the program proceed next year in terms of service delivery for students, then, you know, basically, you're going to want to keep 1.20 in the budget, the 83,000. So if you were to restore, from my list, $83,000, you would move forward next year with the exact same program in terms of service delivery that we have right now. Okay? So restoring 41,000 of it doesn't really do that. So if you want to keep the program intact, current level, no enhancement, then we need to find, quote-unquote, $83,000. So that's one thing here. You would leave the 40,000 in there as a cut because that's a cut of an increase. So it basically reverts it back to the current status. I don't want to get into the left-hand side because ultimately, I think, you know, it's going to be you decide what you want to try to keep and we'll try to figure out where we can take it from. But there's a lot of issues with the cut list. One of the things that I preach to the staff when we come up with cuts is they have to be real cuts. They can't be phantom cuts. And a phantom cut is when you cut a line.
And you have to spend it.
But you have to spend the money anyways because you're going to incur the expense. And so what happens when you make a phantom cut? That's just a term of art. It's not an aspersion on your list because everyone falls into this trap. Is that essentially, you know you're going to overexpend that line and you're eventually going to have to take it from somewhere else to make it whole. And so my instruction is always, well, take it from the somewhere else now. Let's not play the game. So we need to find the somewhere else. Now, some of these, we could cut. Okay? I mean, there wouldn't be phantom cuts. You could cut capital expenses. You could cut technology capital. You could cut the maintenance of the Jennings ceilings. Those would not be phantom cuts. You could cut two paraprofessionals. That would not be a phantom cut. We wouldn't have those positions. I think that just is a bad idea. Those paraprofessionals were added to the budget. They provide direct services to children. We have identified children with special needs who are moving up through the system and into the system. We have scrutinized that list. So it's not a phantom cut, but I don't believe it's a wise cut. In the mileage reimbursement account, just as an example, that's a contractual amount for basically, say, maintenance people that drive around the service schools and they accumulate the mileage and we have to pay them the rate in the contract. So we're going to spend that money one way or the other, whether you have the line fully funded or not. And if you look at the history of what we've spent in there, you can see that it's been pretty much fully expended. Under Business Services, you have the same problem with legal fees. You could say, I want to reduce legal fees. But you're going to expend what you need to expend on legal fees and look at what we spent last year on that. So that's a problem. I think the Instructional Services piece, one of the reasons that the PD has gone up, one is, of course, many members of this board have talked about the importance of professional development in terms of improving the quality of the school system. But the main reason that's going up is because we need to -- we're going to incur a major expense for professional development for both teachers and administrators with respect to the new teacher evaluation plan. And that is not something we can mess around with. So I think that cuts the legs out from under us in that regard. So I don't think we have a lot of choice in that one. The webmaster, I believe, is critical for the communications effort. Now, the Wage and Benefit Reserve is another, you know, you can cut it. The spending's going to be what it is depending on what the settlements are. So you're rolling the dice on that there. Postage, postage rates have gone up. We are doing everything we can to keep it down. But if you look at the history of our postage account, again, we're going to spend what we need to spend. You know, we're not going to get to June and say the postage account is out, so now we can't mail out things we have to mail out. Recruitment has been -- we have been spending that money. I mean, could that be cut? Sure. I don't think it's a wise cut because that's, you know, recruiting top talent to the school district still is an ongoing effort. And we're part of consortiums that do that and career fairs and so forth. So there's still a lot of hard-to-fill positions that we do need to recruit for. So I've got, you know, definitely have issues, you know, there. But I think in terms of what you want to restore, if you want to restore the gifted program, I think you're actually not taking it, you know, you're not adjusting enough. Right? I think you'd want to have the full 83 back in the... I think you'd want to have the full 83 back in the pot. You know, so if you want to keep the gifted in, but just not do the enhancement, then we need to add the full 83, and I think that was a confusing part, and maybe that's what Mr. Carey was getting to. And so, that's all I want to explain on that. I think it's problematic on the overtime, because part of the problem is now, some people pay and some people don't, and people find ways to avoid it, so this is sort of like we're all in on this or we're not. Either everybody pays or nobody pays, and it's very hard to decide which group is worthy of not paying the overtime and which isn't, so that's where we landed on that one. So, that's, those are some thoughts I have on it off the cuff, and if other staff want to say something about it, they are more than welcome to, but.
I had Mrs. Iakono, Mr. Convertito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Lou, so far I see, hands up. Your question was answered?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chairman to Mr. Fattabean, thank you, I appreciate the time and effort that you took to do this. I wish that you had looked at it in January, I wish that you had had an opportunity to send it ahead of time. I am going to implore the board not to take some of these cuts as recommended, and while I think they were made in good faith.
You're talking about the amendment?
The amendment, yeah. I've been here for five years. It has taken us so long to get to a position where we are making actual cuts that really are reflected in our budget book, and these are, I wrote it right here and Dr. Title said it, phantom cuts. Please, I implore you as a board member not to go backwards. We are finally getting respect of the other town bodies, they believe us when we speak about what gets cut and how it's cut. You're robbing Peter to pay Paul and all that's going to happen is you're going to have to fill these holes, they aren't real. So, I wouldn't support the business services, the mileage reimbursement, the instructional services, please do not cut the hourly webmaster. Ad nauseam, we went through this on previous boards trying to beg, borrow, plead, and steal to get our website the way that it is because parents are forever complaining they don't have information, and one of the reasons was because we had nobody staffing it. So, if you reduce this, we're going backwards in our communication efforts, and we just heard a report from the communications chair that we're trying to improve our communications. Wage and benefit reserve, all you're doing is rolling the dice. Paraprofessionals, I mean, why? We still have other things on here where special education's still affected, why are we hitting them again? Postage, who knows if this will really happen? Recruitment expenses, that's again, hit or miss. Capital, capital maintenance. I'm already not happy about the other capital maintenance over here. What are we doing? Kicking the can down the road. So, next year, if and when we get cut again, we can look for more capital, we can cut to save this, that, or the other thing, to only have it blow up later and then have to spend more and then have to do this all over again. It's a never-ending cycle, and for once, I felt like we were finally getting out of it. I applaud you for trying to do it, I wish that you had brought it forward earlier so that the superintendent could have addressed some of these things, but this is not where we need to go with this. I do understand the middle school gifted program, I would ask Dr. Title if he has an idea based on feedback from this board, if he has an idea to substitute something else that the district can do without in order to maintain the program at its current level. I agree wholeheartedly with Mrs. Cannelli about the gifted tested program. There are so many of us that are still invested in this district, that have children in the district, that have our ear to the ground, that hear things, and I really don't think we should be going backwards, I really do not recommend any of this, and I just asked the chair, through the chair to Dr. Title, do you have something else that you would recommend if the board so chooses to maintain the gifted program as it is right now? I know you had other things that you said you were looking at, I know that there were some issues last year with pay-to-play, and you had some other things when you listened to the board discussion about ways to substitute in, do you have any suggestions? Sorry for putting you on the spot.
No, that's fine. I mean, sooner or later, we, you know, we would get there. I guess, you know, if I thought there was a better idea up front, I would have put it out there, so you're obviously onto my second-best idea at this point.
Right. I'm going to the list B of the bad choices.
Right, right, right. But I know that based on the discussion that we had last week, that there was some consternation over a couple of the items that I had put forward, and, you know, that they may not, they may not make it. I really don't think that we want to get, if we can possibly avoid cutting the maintenance capital project budget, I would like to avoid that if at all possible. The reason is that that budget is not really increased much over the current year budget, and the more we take from that, the worse it is, and they turn into capital projects, and then we get problems. The area that, if I have to, you know, suggest something to you, say, to keep the gifted program in place, even though, of course, you just spoke against it, but I'll try anyways, is the technology capital. And the reason for that is that that is one of the few line items in the budget where we are recommending an increase. Now, we need an increase, but can we get away with less of an increase? You know, I think that's where we'd have to, we'd have to try to do that. We are going to incur costs there, we did move some money into it, the increase isn't as big as we thought, you know, because we did move some money from repair and maintenance into that, so it's not as big an increase as you would think. But I would take it from tech capital. The other thing is that as you move the budget forward, you have to be careful that you don't lower the base on a particular line item or category, because then the following year, you try to make it up and people say, oh, my God, look at that huge increase, and everyone forgets that you cut it. So, like, maintenance, if you took the maintenance down, we'd actually be lowering the base, which means next year, trying to make it up makes it look like a huge increase. Tech capital, we wouldn't have that problem, because the base is still above the current year level. So, my suggestion would be if the board wants to restore the gifted program for 83,000 to its current status, my suggestion would be to reduce the tech capital line by an equal amount.
Okay. Let's see, I think it was Mr. Conver, I forget which order I.
It was Carey Convertito.
I will offer to withdraw my motion at the consent of the board with the possibility, I'll make it honest, of the possibility of later moving to postpone this item until our next meeting when we have a better ability to, or at least some of the items, if we can come.
We have to turn in our budget.
Well, first things first.
I'll withdraw, first things first, I'll withdraw.
Does the board wish to?
With the board's consent.
Does the board, well, no, that's what I'm asking, does the board wish to go along with the withdrawal of the motion? Robert's rules require, it's, the motion belongs to the board, once it's put on the table, so therefore, it would be the board who would agree to withdraw it. So, go to the second first, Mrs. Cannelli.
Okay.
You're okay with it. Mrs. Brand.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it. Anybody find that acceptable, I guess, withdrawing it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's withdrawn.
Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Brand. No, Mr.
The amendment is withdrawn.
The amendment is withdrawn. The main motion is still on the table.
Mr. Convertito has the floor.
Now, Mr. Convertito, did you have a?
Correct, he's next.
To the main motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Through the chair to Dr. Title. Interns, we have, by my count, 21 or so interns in the school district.
Can you say what page you're looking at, please?
Starts on page, well, let's see, starts on page 53. Object code 125, line item 51530, per each school, one per elementary school, two per middle school, and three per high school. I notice there's an increase. Interns are, I assume, students that are studying to get a degree in education that are working within our system?
Sort of.
Okay, explain it to me.
Well, interns are, they are in a degree granting program, master's degree program at a local university, and part of what they do, this is separate from their student teaching, is they work with us for a full year and we pay a stipend to the university for their services. And what we use them for is for substitute teaching. So, when I first got here three years ago, I knew we had a lot of interns, and my question was, is this a cost-effective use of the board's money? Because if they're not substitute teaching a certain number of days, then they're costing us a lot more money. But we now require interns to not do their student teaching as part of the internship, so they are available for us for 180, two days a year, and as long as they substitute for at least, say, 110 of those days, it breaks even in terms of substitute costs. So, if you reduce the intern line and reduce the interns, you have to increase the substitute teacher line by at least an equal amount. So, it's really actually a cost-effective way of providing substitute teacher coverage because what happens is, you've got an intern, say, stationed at an elementary school, that intern is in that school, knows the school, knows the routines, is there every day, and moves around, so actually, we get some continuity with the interns that you don't necessarily get with the daily subs.
Who sets the stipend for the intern?
The universities.
So, they pass along the increase?
They pass along, they say, if you want interns this year, the price is, I'd say, $16,000.
Okay.
And there are several that we use, they're all approximately the same cost. If one decided to jack their tuition up to the point where it was not making any sense, we could just not use their interns anymore.
Okay, I direct you to Fairfield Woods Middle School, page 56. And I understand your logic, I just want to make sure I'm where I'm at. Okay? So, if I'm looking at budgeted teacher substitute salaries, estimated expenditure for 1213 at 37857, and I'm putting in a intern for 145, why wouldn't my substitute, proposed budget for 1314 for teacher substitute salaries go down by that amount of money?
We're adding an intern there, because that's the enrollment, right? We added, over, this is all like dusting off the cobwebs from the budget development, but Fairfield Woods is going to have an increase in enrollment next year, and so, we'd anticipate that the substitute teacher costs in the aggregate will go, will go up. And also, you know, we moved from a system where we used to charge all the teacher substitutes to the individual schools, we actually moved a large portion of them into the, into the district account. So, this is only a partial of the cost of teacher sub salaries. All right? Is that part of the allocation? Teacher sub salaries?
Yeah.
There's a whole other account for teacher sub salaries that are aside from this. Right?
Given Roger Ludlow in 1213 is approximately the size that Woods is projected to be in 1314, and the teacher sub salary line for Ludlow was 41,000 with two interns, how is that possible that you're going to achieve those numbers at Woods?
It's, we've been in this transition of tracking substitute costs that used to be charged to the school, and then were charged to the district, and sorting out where they go. So, at this point, you know, you can have, you know, more interns and less of a sub salary being charged there, or you can have a different combination. Basically, at this point, we're looking at is a big lump sum through the whole district.
What if we go back to those institutions and say, we're not going to pay 145, we're only pay 135?
They would say, you can't have interns.
Just looking.
Worth a try.
Are you looking or about to make an additional comment?
I'm going to make an additional comment. I'll pass for now, I reserve.
I think, Mrs. Gerber, will you next, and then Mrs. Brand, and then Mrs. Iakono?
I'll go up to that, if that's okay.
To what, the interns?
Yes. As long as Mrs. Gerber's okay.
I actually was just speaking to Mr. Fattabean's amendment, so my points moved.
Points moved, okay. So, Mr. Lou, you wanted to make a comment, do you pass to Mrs. Brand so she can follow up on the intern?
Yeah, please.
Mrs. Brand.
Through the chair to Dr. Title, what is the going rate per day? I remember many years ago, it was about $50 a day, believe it or not.
It's higher now, what is it?
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but 90, 90.
90.
90.
Long-term sub, 150.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lou.
Thank you. Dr. Title, through the chair to Dr. Title, the Magnet Discovery Transportation, $30,000, Bridgeport currently pays for these costs, what does that mean?
Bridgeport operates as part of the Bridgeport Board of Education, the Discovery Magnet School. There are some students from Fairfield that go to that. Bridgeport is obligated to provide that transportation, the way the regulations work with the state. It's what they're doing for the new Fairchild Wheeler Inter-District High School Magnet that they're about to open, they're paying for the transportation costs. In the middle of the budget, they sent us a note and said that they would like us to pick up those costs. I put those in the budget as part of our transportation budget, but now that we're being squeezed, the way we're being squeezed, I'm suggesting that the board go back to the legal obligation and ask Bridgeport to continue paying the costs that they're paying.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, what, you know, this is so very difficult, and I think one of the things, it's so important that we don't rush it. Why can't, if we need it, why can't this conversation carry over to the next board meeting?
Because we have to turn in our budget.
We are required to submit a budget with sufficient time for both the staff to turn it around from an accounting point of view and get all the data entry, and then into the town, so that the town's staff can do that, so.
But the town knows our basic number. You don't mean a couple of weeks is going to make a big problem?
We need, we need a lot of time to make the adjustments in this budget and then be ready to turn it over July 1, for real. Doreen just had a heart attack at the end of the table. It is a huge task, data entry, balancing, making sure everything's right, because, and then we are ready to turn it over. It's weeks and weeks of effort. I really would urge the board to make the decision tonight on what you want to do, it's not going to get any easier, we really need an answer.
I don't disagree that it's not going to get any easier, but I think what Mr. Fattabean was on to is actually the right direction to be going, and I am completely respectful of where you sometimes have disagreements in that, and I think we can listen to that. But I think taking little places throughout the budget is a much better way of doing it than to have to cut these programs. And there are three programs that I am very, very passionate about that we keep, and that is the gifted program for 83,000, the swimming for special education for 26,000.
Please, please.
And fifth grade music class for 30,000. So, this is very difficult for me to say, but I think it's important that we ask these tough questions, and we're looking at numbers right now and thinking of it this way. Dr. Title, you have two full-time secretary administrative assistants, will you give up one of them so we can get some programs back?
I think he's already recommended which staff within the central office that he would recommend not be filled, and so I think his answer is.
I never heard that, which, what is it?
We have on the list secretary in central office for reduction.
Right.
Right.
And a district-wide.
And a district-wide media technician.
Right. I know, I understand that, I was saying, that's one, can we do another one?
No.
You have your personal ones.
They serve the district, they serve the. They serve the district, they serve the parents and everyone else in the district, they serve the Board of Education. We looked at the central office, as we did the last time we had a cut. We are, we have taken on a tremendous amount of work, we do a tremendous amount of work. These positions are essential, and we are putting a secretary from the central office on the cut list, and that is really all we can do.
I noticed that in business services, if I counted up the heads of business services, I believe we had like 10, 10 people, but we have 13 and 1/2 secretaries.
No, we don't.
Can't we cut 3 and 1/2 and give everybody their own secretary and still?
They're not secretaries, we went through this.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we already had this discussion.
Secretarial services, then, and clerical services.
They're not.
Line 64.
I believe that during our original budget hearings, a number of these questions were asked.
I'd like Dr. Title to answer this question.
We've already asked, point of information.
Was asked and answered.
The positions that you're talking about are people that are working in the accounting office, the payroll office, the benefits office, they're not what you would call secretarial positions. They have specific responsibilities to carry out the business functions of the school system. Payroll, accounts payable, I should point out that the school district took on this year with no additional staff. The accounts payable for the town.
I'm mumbling to myself. I don't have the mic.
I do want to point out that this year, starting this fiscal year, the business department, with no additional staff, took on the accounts payable that previously had been done by the town, that allowed the town to actually reduce a position, and we did that with no increase in staff. So the positions that you're referencing are not, you know, they may, it may be a label that is misleading, but, and I think we did list all of those out for the board, and we're talking about, again, accounts payable, accounting department, payroll, benefits administration, they're not secretaries. They're very important work, they're essential to keeping us in line on all the business services that we have to provide.
Mrs. Iakonou is next, but...
No, I'm not finished yet. I don't doubt for a minute there, it's very important, and I understand how difficult this is. I am just trying to find other ways, and I'd love to hear other suggestions possibly from you, to go down the line that like Mr. Fattabene is going, to shave off areas so that we can keep some of these important programs. Do you think we can do that?
Well, I think the, I'm... Go procedurally how you want to do it. I think the board votes to restore, you know, certain things on the list, then I think the next discussion is, you know, what suggestions do you have, Dr. Title, where it comes from? Right? And I gave you one example for the one, for the one program. But I think the first question is, to the board, you know, I mean, is the board want to, you know, restore whatever it is? And then we have a total to hit, and then, you know, I can give you some ideas on how we could hit that total. So I'm happy to do that.
So I'd like to go there and go with official motions that say, I want to suggest, Ms. Iakonou, I think has such a motion.
I do. Sorry. I would like to move that we restore the middle school gifted program in the amount of $83,000 and substitute it by reducing the technical capital line by $83,000 as recommended by the superintendent when I asked for a suggestion.
Do I have a second for that motion? Mrs. Cannelli, do you want to make any comments on that motion, or?
No, I think it stands for itself. I understand, I do just want to add, I was very vocal about believing that we need to make improvements to this program. I think we really, we can service our students a lot better. I said a lot of what I needed to say at the last meeting, I just implore this staff to look at this program and figure out ways to improve it with the money that you have, because I don't think we're doing the best that we can. I think you're doing a good job, I think we can do a better job.
Mrs. Cannelli, you seconded it, you have floor, then Mr. Convetito.
Just one point of information, through the chair to Dr. Title.
And that does not include leveling, I just want to add that.
It is listed as an $83,000 item. I do have one question, when you add up the three staff positions, it's 45,694. And I was, just because we want to make sure our books are straight, what's the, that's from each school, from page 39 in the budget book, the three schools, it adds up to 45,694. So I was wondering, why on our line is it 83,000?
The 1.2 positions, those may be the actual salary for those, Doreen, do you know?
It's page 39.
See, it doesn't quite work that way. Okay, because what happens is, if you were actually to eliminate that, those folks would go bump somewhere else. And at the end of the line, a job will get eliminated, not for the price of that teacher. Okay? So you can't count the savings for the individual that's in there. So basically, this becomes an estimate of what we think the reduction would be, because it's likely to be, say, a less senior person that gets eliminated. So you're not going to get a perfect match between these cuts and what's in the budget, because if you actually cut an existing position, which this would be, this 83 would be cutting existing people, those would probably not be the people that would actually go, because there's bumping. So this really becomes an estimate. That's the simplest way I can explain it. Doreen, did I do any damage there? Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I think if, in terms of adding something, we may put a number in to add as a placeholder, then we just take that number out when we cut it. But when we're talking about actual people and positions, it has to be an estimate based on bumping.
Mr. Convetito?
I just want to, through the chair to Dr. Title, and actually to Tom Cullen, capital budget has two items on it, the HVAC at Sherman and Osborne Hill. How crucial are those, that those get done this year? And the reason I ask that is that we have not yet accepted Phase 2 of Sherman. And 40,000 of that is Phase 1 of Sherman, and I personally, as a board member, am prepared not to accept Phase 2 until Phase 1 is corrected.
You're asking about the HVAC systems of the two annex buildings? Specifically, the one at Sherman? All right. My own opinion would be that it's very important to do those. What we found is, the HVAC systems for those two annex buildings, specifically in the cooling mode, there's almost impossible to regulate the amount of cooling that's going through the six classrooms, and a buildup of condensation developed on a couple of the classroom walls. So at the beginning of the school year, when the teachers were coming back and the custodians were cleaning, they found issues with all of the walls in these classrooms. So we're looking at a consultant to come in and a mechanical company to add to the system, to try and regulate per room. As you know, these systems, they're not zoned so that every classroom has its own thermostat.
Is that it, Mr. Convetito? Okay. Other question, oh yes, Mr. Carey had asked.
So, I want to kind of circle back to a question I started to ask the last meeting. We have roughly 2,500 students in the middle schools right now, is that a good approximation? Anyone? 20 to 21 percent of them are identified as gifted, is that an accurate approximation?
We gave that data out in the...
I apologize.
Hand out, right.
Yeah, that's about right.
It's in the, you're in the ballpark.
So we're looking around 500, 525 kids?
Right, yes.
So, just to say conservatively, we're talking about a program here that services 500 students for $83,000. So roughly $166 a student is what we're expending. I have a concern that we don't do enough as a district for the gifted, particularly at this level, but I similarly have a concern that we're identifying too many peoples gifted. And, you know, sorry, I've got too many small kids in my house, but, you know, when they say in the Incredibles movie, when everyone's special, no one is, I think that applies here. If we were at the 3% to 5% level and expended this kind of money, I think we could have a very meaningful program for students that are truly gifted. And at this expenditure level, I'm not sure that we're going to get the bang for the buck we need. That doesn't mean that, I don't think that we should have something for the students at the top, truly at the top tier. But $166 a student, my preference, I think, at this point, would be to move this off the line and have the district come back to us next year or the year after with a program that matches, you know, truly what the gifted numbers are in our community.
You're speaking against the amendment.
So I would, I would say at this point, at this dollar amount, that I don't think that we can have an effective program for the number of students that we have.
Mr. Convetito, and then Mr. Lou.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the amendment. It's been my experience in the system that once something is gone, it's gone for a long time. And I realize that the 83,000 may not fully meet the need that we have at that level, but it gives us, to bring it back, it'll cost us 83,000 plus. And those numbers in the middle school gifted program are going to adjust down as the population moves through. And if we don't have a program in place there, then it'll cost us twice that to bring a program back. And once we move a program, you know, off the books, we might as well just say we don't want to do it. And I'm very wary to do that. The other program that I, and I happened to just be a wallflower on Friday and watch one of these programs, and if Andrea could come up, you need to talk to us about the special ed swimming program.
After this amendment motion is acted on.
After the amendment motion, that's fine. So I'm in support of this amendment, and the other one that's, I would like us to save is the swimming program.
Mr. Lou?
I am also in support of this amendment. It's, for everything that Mr. Convetito said, but in addition, yes, okay, we're trying to count our pennies and it's a large amount, but it's a small amount when you think of the services it brings to a small group that needs to be challenged. And I think one of the most important things as a Board of Education is, we're looking out for everybody, and there's a spectrum there. That means special ed, gifted, and the typical students. If these kids aren't challenged, then it's letting down the entire system because we're not providing for everybody. So I think this, this, as well as a few of the others I listed, and I know we'll get to them, they're so important that we take care of them and protect them.
Trying to move the discussion along on the total item, I am prepared to be here till daylight to get this passed tonight, so I sense...
And just as a mover, make final comments?
I sense that there's already a majority in support of this amendment, so I'll ask Mrs. Iakonou to make final comments, and then ask if the board is ready for a vote.
I understand the concept, I hear everyone's voice, I agree with everybody in their words and what they said. Mr. Carey, you said very eloquently what I was trying to get out before. My plea is to tighten up the identification process. We are way off the mark of the national average. And I love my kids, but they are not, every single one of them gifted, even though I want to make a plea to let you make them gifted. So, please hold firm, please reevaluate that, and please tighten up those standards. And, thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Would you just be kind enough to read, so, I mean, we've been going on for a while with the motions.
So I'll ask Mrs. Iakonou, who made the motion, to restate it.
Sure. To restore the middle school gifted program in the amount of $83,000 and reduce the technical capital line by $83,000 as recommended by the superintendent when I asked for a substitute item.
And Mrs. Muncell, you have that down, okay?
Just through the chair, a point of clarification, because we have a line item on Dr. Title's list for 111,800, are we increasing that by 83,000?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to...
Correct.
Correct. Any further clarifications for the board so they can vote on the motion? If not, are we ready to act? All in favor of the motion as restated, raise your hands and say aye. We have a unanimous, no, we don't have a, we have, sorry, Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iakonou, Mr. Fattabene, and Mrs. Brand voting in favor. All opposed, Mr. Carey. So we have a motion that passed eight to one. Mr., Mrs. Brand?
I'd like to make a motion. I think it would help move the process along a great deal. I don't think any of the board members, unless I'm terribly mistaken, have a sense of how they're going to vote on the curriculum, the secretaries, the media technician, the additional certified staff turnover, the health insurance, and the pension. If we could at least move that along, that starts to narrow the, correct me if I'm wrong?
You don't have to do that, we're just substituting.
It's, that's all in the main motion.
That's in the main motion, but if we take that and segment that piece out, we then are looking in a more narrow scope, and I think it would help move things along to take some things off the table.
We don't have to.
I understand.
My preference is that there's been one or two other areas that board members have perhaps expressed an interest in talking about. Let's deal with those one or two, and then if we have a list that we're ready to act on, we do.
Yeah, I would like to make this as a motion, that we move the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items as a motion for approval.
It's already in the motion.
But we're separating them. What I'm making a motion to amend it is to separate that segment separately, and we can address the rest. But I would actually like to get something off our plate right now, if we can.
You don't have to, it's off.
Okay, what's the...
It's already off.
Yeah. The motion is on the table as it is, including all of those lists, Mr. Fattabene.
You're good, you're good for what you want.
Procedurally, you may be able to entertain a motion to divide the question?
Yeah.
And divide it so that the first five items are achieved in dividing it, and then go back to the remainder of it. So dividing would be, the first five items would be divided out of the other main motion, so it's a motion to divide.
Is that what you wish to do?
Sounds just fine.
Is there a second for dividing the, Mr. Lou? You've made your argument, do you have anything further, or do you want to?
No, I just think these are pretty much, you know...
Mr. Lou, do you have any comments that you want to make as a secondary? My personal preference is that we act on whichever items we want to, and that we act on the list in total. That's my personal preference. It's not that I disagree with the concept of a division, just, I think we have another couple of items to talk about, and then we could act on this as a whole, so I will not be supporting the division of the motion for those reasons. Comments from people on the motion to divide? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion to divide, which is to divide the first, second, third, fourth, fifth lines down through the pension, from the balance of the lines, raise your hand and say aye. I have one. Mr. Convetito, that's two. So, Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs...
Brand, you remember.
Brand, yeah. All opposed? We have Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iakonou, Mr. Carey, the motion passes. So now we have two motions, one on the table for the top list, first five items, and then a second motion for the balance. Is that as was expected?
I think only one motion's on the table at a time, it should be the motion.
It's made your life much more difficult. The divided motion is...
The divided motion is on the table.
So now we need to vote on the divided thing?
Not yet, can amend it.
Oh, that's true, you're right.
Okay, so we have now divided into...
We can ask for amendments on the divided.
We have now divided the motion in two. Okay, so now, are there any further conversations on the first part? We'll say it about the first part.
No.
Could the chair identify part one and part two, please?
So part one is the line items that start at the top of the list, curriculum secretary, media technician, additional certified staff turnover, health insurance, and pension. Those one, two, three, four, five line items.
Move to call the question.
Second, all in favor of calling the question, raise your hand.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote. Fine, we go immediately to the question, which is to approve the five line items that were just mentioned.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Don't have to.
It's a unanimous vote to be recorded. Okay, so now we have the balance of the list, which starts with the phase N E L L resources 50,000, and goes down to the last item, magnet discovery transportation, knowing that it has been amended to eliminate the 83,000 on the middle school gifted program is no longer on the list, and the 111,800 is increased by 83,000. Does everybody understand that that's what is now on the list, and is the motion before the board? Mrs. Muncell, does that match with your tracking?
Three million, eight oh one, four eighty. That's better than-
I, I can't hear you. The list, the total list still adds up to the four, six, three, seven, four, eighty-eight.
We really haven't done anything.
Okay, you just split it.
Yeah, we've just, we've just split the list for-
Honest to God.
Good and just purposes, right? So the only change on the bottom of the list is that the 83 is no longer there, it's a zero, and the 111,800 is now $83,000 higher. Does the board understand that?
Yes.
You do, okay. Any further commentary on that motion as it is for the bottom of the list? Mr. Lou.
Yes, I would, I'll make a motion in a second. Let me just write, say this out. I'd like, I'd like to reinstate the grade five general music class, and start doing that with the business services at 26,000, as well as the Board of Ed workshops and conferences. I think we can do without that this year, can't we, folks? $3,000, which almost gets us up to 30. And maybe the superintendent can give us the last 1,000. So I'd like to make a motion that we remove the grade five general music class from elimination. Instead, eliminate the business services at 26,000, as Mr. Fattabene had said, as well as the workshop and conferences for $3,000 for the Board of Education. Dr. Title, if you could give us another 1,000 somewhere, it'd be super.
It's your motion, Mr. Lou.
Right. Thought I finished it.
Just make it 27 out of business services, round it up.
Okay. 27 out of business services and 3,000, thank you.
How's that?
It's beautiful.
Is there a second for that motion?
Not in favor of it, I'm just helping you out.
Okay.
Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion? Mrs. Brand. Have you made your arguments on that, or do you have further comments that you wish to make?
I think we know. It's, it's, it's an important program. I believe in it. I think we should not be cutting it. We continue to cut music. Every time we're in a bind, it's already a small program as it is. I think it's vital. And I think, you know, this is one of the things that this, this town is known for. I would hate to, you know, take that away.
Please.
That will help us in, in, you know, just bringing more attention to this, this great district.
Mrs. Brand, and then Mrs. Iacrona.
Quite frankly, I couldn't agree more. I can't tell you how heartsick I was to see programs even on the list, but particularly music, amongst some others, which we will get to, I'm sure, sooner than later. But there's no question in my mind that I think the music program and what it does for students, I really don't think we can put a price on that. I think it's, it does infinitely more than what we believe. So I would not support this as a cut, and I do support keeping it in.
Mrs. Iacrona.
I will support this. I feel very strongly that we have a wonderful music program, an excellent music program. However, there are three days a week that are dedicated to music for fifth graders. I trust administration to take this opportunity to increase our instructional time in the classroom for things like math. One of the things that happened when we reduced the world language, well, it was something that I really didn't want to do, we've gotten increased instructional time in language arts. So I'm hoping that we can get increased instructional time in some of the core subjects like math, while the fifth grade students will still be getting music at least once a week in chorus another day of the week. Or if administration is able to find time to do music and then combine chorus and music the second day a week, that's fine. And in the meantime, we've picked up instructional time in a common core area that is, we've had a year-long discussion on math and its subject matter. I've gone on about this several times. I encourage the board to substitute, I mean to not reinstate this cut.
You're opposed to the amendment?
Thank you.
You support the original cut?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Title. In terms of if this were to be reduced, what, how would the curriculum be modified? Would that be a problem? Have you spoken to Mrs. Schmerdell or anyone else in music who would be able to give you some guidance on that?
I have spoken to Mrs. Schmerdell. Obviously, we'd have to go through similar procedure that we went through in world language, which is we would need to, you know, get the teachers together, probably over the summer, make modifications in the curriculum, pick out what's most critical, and adjust. It's not an ideal situation. I will say in my conversation with her, and if she hears, she could speak for herself, that what I really wanted to do in this arena was really protect the ensemble groups, the performances, the lessons, a lot of things that were on that list back in January. And so that, you know, if we needed to make a reduction, this, this area could be accommodated. But I will not say that she's in favor of this. She's not in favor of it. But we have talked about how we'll have to modify it with the, you know, with the assistance of the staff. We just have to, that'd be a project for us.
A question, if I could, that was asked before by Mrs. Iacrona, that if a majority of the board wanted to reinstate this, i.e. take it off the list, is there a different reduction than what was proposed by Mr. Lou, that you would say, if you're going to restore it, I would rather take the money from another line item?
Right. As I, I think I said in response to Mr. Fattabene's suggestion, I think the business services line is not a wise place to take it, because I think it's an area where we're going to spend that money, so I think we're just not really making it.
I would be more than happy to make a friendly amendment if you could suggest another 27,000.
Sure, right. I think that if we have to go to another 27, for this or any other item that might, that might come up, I would go deeper into the well on the tech capital for another 27,000. I think we're pretty much, that may just about do it, or maybe there's a few thousand more in there, but I think we're running, bumping up against it. That's really, you know, if, if the board wanted to restore this particular program, then my suggestion would be to take it out of tech capital, not business services or... Well, you have the 3,000 for Board of Ed travel. I suppose that is really a board decision. You know, if you guys aren't going to go anywhere, then, you know, you could take 3,000 out of Board of Ed travel and the remainder out of tech capital. I, that would be preferable. I, I just think the business services line is not a wise choice.
I'm, I'm afraid of taking more out of tech capital, though, given that we already just took a bunch out of there. So I think I will stay with my original motion. Can I just respond to a question that Dr., or something that you just said, Dr. Title? I mean, so by eliminating this one class, you had said that you're going to have to adjust the curriculum, and that you're going to need to meet over the summer with the teachers. Is that going to cost us more? Because I know that's what we do with the math program. We have the teachers get involved, and then we pay them.
Right. We would, but we, we would have, we would just handle that within the existing appropriation. We wouldn't go in and add to an account. It wouldn't be, you know, a huge, it's not like doing a whole curriculum revision for K to V music, where you gather a lot of people. I think it could be done, you know, relatively quickly, at least to get the year started. And then as the year moves on, there may need to be some further work done with the teachers. So I don't think it would be a hit to the curriculum development account.
Thank you. I just have to say again that, you know, this, basically, they have a half, two half-hour days a week to learn how to read music, how to understand it, so that they can put it into effect in the chorus and in their bands. What we see, the culmination of that, when we go to the middle school and the high school concerts, is, starts with the seeds at the elementary school. I just think we're cutting out our, our legs in order to, you know, on such an amazing program. So I hope everyone else will support it.
Any final comments, and are we ready for a board vote? I, it's not that I don't support the program, but I would rather make it up in an area where Dr. Title feels is the best place to make it up, and not, so I'll be voting against the amendment, because I think the counterbalancing side is, is in the wrong area. Any further comments the board members have? Mrs. Cannelli.
One, I agree with you, Mr. Dwyer. I don't agree where it's coming from, only because the legal fees have, are obviously sizable, and that would concern me. My one, the only part of me that hesitates in terms of supporting, I absolutely believe that our, our music program is fantastic. I completely, very much appreciated that Dr. Title said early on that he avoided all instrumentation, all of the ensemble music, et cetera. My concern is, is that I have spoken with fifth grade teachers, and they are, in fact, crying out for more instructional time, because music, specifically music, actually takes far more time than is indicated by this one class, because what you also have are all of the pullouts for all of the various instruments. And so that it's, in fact, actually a rather chaotic school year from the perspective of the fifth grade teachers. It's not just two music classes and then a chorus class. There is the before-school band, but then there will be the pullout for, and I apologize, I can't group these correctly, but there'll be the pullout for clarinet, there'll be the pullout for trumpet, et cetera. So in fact, there's a great deal of disruption for the music curriculum, completely worthwhile, because, again, the results speak for themselves when we hear the high school reports, in terms of how fabulous our music program is. But I'm beginning to wonder, at least at that fifth grade level, if it's not disproportionately disruptive as, I mean, we approved that music curriculum. It was wonderful. It was rich. It was interdisciplinary. It cut across so many strands of what we do. But that would be something I'm concerned about.
Thank you. I agree.
In the interest of moving this along, are we ready for a vote? I, I said that specifically before you rounded the corner.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
The amendment is to remove the grade five general music class, which is for $30,000, and replace it with $27,000 reduced from business services and $3,000 reduced from the Board of Ed conference line. Does everybody understand the motion that's in front of us? All in favor of that amendment, raise your hand. Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabene, and Mrs. Brand, all opposed to that amendment. Mrs. Cannelli, Mrs. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacrona, Mr. Carey, the motion fails. Any further motions that people wish to make? I want to make, Mr. Lou, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance here. Mr. Convetito, and then back to Mr. Lou.
I like to propose an amendment that the special education swimming aquatics program, $26,000 be restored in the operating budget. The funds to come from, 6,000 from the ceiling at Jennings School, 3,000 from the Board of-
Wait, wait, slow down, slow down.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what you said.
3,000 from the Board of Education dues and fees account. Be more than happy to pay my travel to Cabe Conference next fall.
From the travel account?
It was the dues and fees, right?
The one I did.
Is that different?
Is that what?
Workshops and conferences.
Workshops and conferences, isn't that what the?
Workshops and conferences.
Okay, from the workshops and conferences.
That's Board of Ed.
Yes.
That's us.
Right.
Okay. And the remaining to come from the technology budget, as previously stated by Dr. Title.
Which is 23,000?
It would be, no, 6,000 for the Jennings School ceiling.
Jennings.
3,000 from the Board of Ed dues and fees. That's 9,000, so it would be 15,000 from the, 17,000, I'm sorry, from the technology budget.
So the, to reinstate the swimming special ed at 26,000 and replace it with the reduction from the capital budget of 6,000 related to Jennings, 3,000 from the Board of Ed workshop, and 17,000 from capital technology.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Iacrona has that as a second. Let me get back to you in a second, but on this particular line item, a portion of the, where is it, of the $26,000 is actually paid to the YMCA to rent their pool. And the YMCA is my former employer, although now that I've been retired two years, I just wanted to say that that relationship existed, but I will continue to vote on this item having divulged it. Huh?
Full disclosure.
Full disclosure. Mr. Convetito, do you have any further comments that you want to make on this motion?
Just on your comment, the YMCA happens to be a non-for-profit, okay, which we don't charge rental fees to.
And when I had my YMCA director's hat on, I fully supported that position. Who seconded it?
Me, I did.
Mrs. Iacrona's next.
I actually have a couple of questions. The $3,000 for dues and fees, would this prevent the, the, I have an issue with this because it's an election year, and we'll have new members, and it's really important for the, them to attend the new member orientation. Would that affect being able to send board members to the conference, to Cabe for the, for, I think they should go to that meeting. I don't, I'm perfectly willing, as a board member, to give up staying in the hotel. I don't have an issue with that. I just want to make sure.
That's directed to Dr. Title.
I'm sorry.
Well, you can, you know, I mean, there would be no subsidy from the school district for that. Anybody who wanted to go would then be, pay their own way. That's how it would work. You'd still be able to go to the conference.
I guess they're going to know that before they run for office.
Right. In other words, you're still members of Cabe, and I think it's worthwhile, but you would be basically saying that if you want to go to this conference, you have to pay your own way. That's how I understand it.
Okay, and that would be the one, the big conference in October.
Well, and, and it would also, I mean, if you zero out the line, then it would be any, any other Cabe conference, or any other conference, CES conference, whatever, that a board member wanted to go to, they'd have to pay their own way.
Would you still be able to have new member board orientation that Cabe conducts for us?
Oh, sure. I mean, we're not, we're not removing the Cabe services. You'd still be able to have the Cabe policy service, you'd still be able to have Cabe for legal advice when warranted, you'd still could have Cabe come to the district and do workshops, but this is specifically about reimbursing board members for their costs for attendance.
Okay, and then my other question is about the Jennings ceilings. I really, I know I seconded this, but I have a ton of questions. Mr. Collins, sorry. What exactly are you doing on the ceilings? I hate deferring maintenance, and I'm wondering if the mover would be open to just taking the 6,000 and rolling it into the tech budget?
The Jennings ceiling, we're leaving the existing acoustical grid, but we're replacing all the ceiling pads. They're outdated, they're crumbling and falling apart, and we can't get that specific style anymore. So we're just putting new ceiling tiles, pads in throughout the whole school.
So the, the question is not to you that Mrs. Iacrona asked after you answered her first half of the question. Would you remove the 6,000 and make it 23,000 in capital technology?
I don't have a problem with- I don't have a problem with it. I just procedurally, if you... I don't want to get into a friendly amendment argument.
That's why I seconded it. So I was hoping we could just...
That's fine.
All right, cool. So...
So we have two. Does the board accept the change of the motion as presented, which is to reinstate the... Where have I got it? The special ed swimming and instead remove $3,000 from the Board of Ed workshop and conference line and $23,000 from the Capital Technical line? Does the board understand that as the motion in front of us? Right? Any further questions or comments on that motion? Mrs. Cannelli, and then Mr. Lou.
It's my understanding from parent letters that they had already been given a heads-up that their program might be cut to one day a week and that goals could still be met at the program. I was wondering, what is the expenditure... What is the savings of a cut from two days a week to one for what is clearly... I mean, the letters have just been amazing that we've all received regarding the benefits of this program, but financially, what is it if it goes from two days a week to one?
You couldn't do it. We have 25 students who participate. Of that, only three participate twice a week now. The problem is, or the issue would be, having 25 students and the almost one-to-one ratio of staff with those students in a pool at the same time would be unsafe. So you can't... You would not be able to just diminish it down and put all the students into the pool at the same time. It would be an untenable situation, and I couldn't recommend... I just couldn't recommend it. It would be unsafe.
And as an operator of a swimming pool, the idea of, you know, that number of special-needs children in the pool with their instructors at the same time would also make me personally nervous. Mr. Convatito?
Yeah, through the chair. How long has this program been in place?
Well, I've been here now, finishing 17 years. It's been in effect the entire time. I would say probably closer to 25 years.
Okay.
I'd have to get an exact figure, but I...
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
I know someone who interned in the program.
Thank you. Thirty-six is the answer.
The reason I put this back up, you know, or I'm attempting to put this back in, and again, you know, I got a number of emails, and I just happened to email one or two parents back to ask them when their child was going, so I could actually observe it. And I know that you can do physical therapy in other ways and so forth, but this program is... And I appreciate you at least putting something up there, okay? And I get that. I just don't think a program like this, to watch that little boy just, you know, be in that pool and do those things, and to see the expressions and to see, you know, the therapy and what was going on was not only amazing but touching to me, okay? And if we're not here to protect the ones at the fringes, okay, I don't know what we're doing. It's not a lot of money. I urge the board to go with this amendment, and I'm done with amendments after this.
So if I'm reading tea leaves, it strikes me that, you know, that salesman, once you've made the sale, shut up. But nonetheless, Mr. Lou, you have a comment, and Mrs. Cannelli?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to encourage board members to vote for this. It's an amazing program. I knew Mr. Convatito was going to put this up, or I would have done it myself. I've sat with parents, I've read the letters. This is a life changer. I think this is a kind of program that changes children's lives, and again, this is one of those smaller programs that we need to protect, so I hope everyone will support this.
Any further comments? Mrs. Brand?
Again, you know, when I look at this kind of program, I quite frankly think, again, the value far exceeds the $26,000. The impact it has is tremendous. It's physical, it's emotional, intellectual. It's a very profound influence it has on students, and I think it would be, quite frankly, devastating to Mr. Convatito's points earlier. If it's gone, we will lose it, and I think that would be tragic. So I, too, will strongly urge board members to keep it.
With the $6,000 being maintained for Jennings and all of it out of Capital Technical and the BOE line, I will support this motion as well. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All in favor, raise your hands. We have one, two, three, four, five. We have a unanimous vote. So now...
Mr. Chairman, I move to call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. Ms. Carey?
May I second?
Seconded the motion with no debate. We are here to call the question. Remember, this is the division of the motion, so therefore it's calling the question on everything from $50,000 down to the $30,000 with the two corrections and amendments that have been made. Three... No, two. One for the gifted and one for special ed. So there's no debate, but I'm clarifying where we stand at the moment. All in favor of calling the question, raise your hand. Mr. Convatito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Carey? All opposed? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fadabene, Mrs. Brand? Motion passes five to four, so we go immediately to a vote.
Quarter?
Yes?
Six. Is that a two-thirds? Vote for the call of question?
Two-thirds.
Oh, it is two-thirds. It's a good point of order. I knew there was a reason we kept you around, Mr. Fadabene. Thank you very much.
Five votes.
Okay, so Mrs. Cannelli, I think, had her hand up first... No, Mr. Lou, I think, first, and then Mrs. Cannelli.
You go ahead, Jen.
Okay. No, I'm fine. The additional amendment I'd like to propose is regards to the high school athletics rental charge. So... But before I proposed the amendment, I had one more budget question for Dr. Tidal, if I may ask. Regarding administration, one position, and I apologize because I'm sure that, as Mrs. Iacono's pointed out, this may have been covered before, and I apologize, I don't remember. The position of the middle school liaison at all three schools totals $132,000. And I understand all sorts of levels of administration, and I fully appreciate the daunting task ahead of us in terms of the teacher evaluation plan. But to me, that's a very tempting $132,000.
Right. I think we did this last year, the year before. It's not a position. Those are stipends that are paid to middle school teachers who serve as liaisons to the principal as part of the leadership team, so it's not an administrative position. It's stipends. So there's liaisons between the teams and communities. They're kind of like team leaders, I guess would be the way to think about it. So it's not administration. It's paying teachers for leadership within the middle schools, and it's critical to the functioning of the middle school and community concept that we have that. I would not recommend you touch that.
Then to return... Okay, thank you. And I did forget that, so, sorry.
It's all right.
But again, I am opposed, so I would propose an amendment that the high school athletics rental charge be eliminated as an offset, to be made up by... By...
Shall we move on to Mr. Lou until you've...
Sure.
Are ready?
He's not ready.
Mr. Lou is not ready.
No, I'll go, I'll go.
She needs to make a motion.
Something first, I think.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, please get your motion in order so that we...
A little motion.
Well, I've asked her to get her motion in order so we're not waiting as she searches through the book. Mrs. Brand?
If Mrs. Cannelli would reconsider putting that motion about the liaison stipend on the table, I would not only second it, but I would support it.
I'm coming back to music again. Fifth-grade general music class. I'd like to get that saved, and I would like...
Mr. Lou? Yes. That motion has already been acted on.
Can't do it again?
No. In order to reconsider, somebody who was voting in the... Voting for the motion to... In the majority, would have to be the one to bring that forward. Thank you. Are we... Do I understand that we're down to one last idea that Mrs. Cannelli wishes to put forth? Is that where we are? Or not?
So again, I'm proposing that we eliminate that rental charge, to be made up by... One, I don't think it is a phantom charge for the $10,000 in postage, considering right now, all elementary schools are being told that that first mailing of the year will not be a mailing anymore. That's $2,000 in one mailing right there. So I would propose that $10,000 cut. I would propose that $6,000 recruitment expense. I think it can be done online through our very qualified hourly webmaster and others, technicians in the office. That being 16. And I'm open to recommendations from Dr. Tidal. I hate to put it right back on the technology. I don't believe in that.
I'm running out of ideas.
I got you.
I'm running out of ideas.
I have to encourage...
I think you're into maintenance projects at this point. I hate to say it. I really think you are. I mean, because I'm not going to give you... I mean, it's clear to me, the board doesn't want to cut... I don't blame you. The board doesn't want to... You know, you don't want me to substitute another program cut. Not going to substitute a personnel cut, that's... Because that's essentially the same way, so we've got to be into non-personnel arena, right? And if you recall, I'll just give you the lay of the land here a little bit while you're thinking.
I had it before.
Yeah, if you recall, one of the areas I'd previously gone to in previous... Like, last year when we cut, was I took some money out of the allocations for every school. It was shaved that across the board by a certain percent, but we've already done that. As if you remember, that was done by the board back in January. So some of the stuff that I could have given you, the board actually took up way... Way some time ago. So I think we'd be into tech capital for another portion and maintenance for a certain portion, and that's probably the best I can give you right now. And obviously, we're getting to the point where I'm uncomfortable with it.
Right. The one other idea I had had was a across-the-board 2% cut to electric... Pardon me, electricity, because I think the idea of the incentive for the schools having... Being in a school at present now, I am well aware of the waste that's in there, and that is even with the lights, with the timers. That an across-the-board 2% cut in that, inform to administration well in advance, with your own little training in terms of teachers understanding the impact of computers left on, lights left on, et cetera, I would rather have a $45,000 cut there. I had given you the number before. I think it was $40,000, $343, that that is an across-the-board cut and to not be charging for these rentals for these rather arbitrarily selected sports.
I want to clarify where your motion is at the moment.
Sure.
I understand the $50,000 side, because that's easy.
Right.
You've mentioned Jennings at $6,000, BOE at $3,000, Capital Tech at $17,000, so you have $24,000 left to go.
So that I would be changing it to $45,000 across-the-board 2% cut to electricity, as well as a $6,000 cut to the Jennings ceiling?
Okay.
Pardon me, pardon me. $5,000 cut to postage.
To postage. Jennings ceiling is still there?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion that is on the table that we would be looking for a second on is to remove the high school athletics rental charges at $50,000 and replace it with a $45,000 reduction to the electricity line, spread as appropriate, and $5,000...
Postage.
From the postage line. Do people understand that? Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion?
Yes.
Thank you very much. There's a second. Mrs. Cannelli, you've kind of made some arguments on behalf of the motion in making the motion. Do you have anything further that you wish to say?
Absolutely. It very much... And I understand the idea that to, rather than do an across-the-board pay-to-play cut... Or, excuse me, income enhancement, to instead go after bowling, which has its, I believe, the least expensive sport we have, but now we're going to start charging them. To charge our swimmers, because we don't... Fairfield has not yet come up with in its own indoor pool. The skiing, the hockey. I look at something like, and I have no desire to impose a fee on drama and music, and yet the $26,000 that that costs very much puts it in the same realm as many of these sports. And to go after that $50,000, I just... I think it's unjustified. It's... Can be at some level discriminatory, and I'm completely opposed to funding certain programs on the backs of those particular athletes.
Mr. Fadabene, you seconded the motion?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that this should be reinstated. I would have just taken the money at other locations, and primarily the locations they already identified that I think are not necessarily phantom cuts. It's like any budget, there are savings that could be there, that could be implemented. You may not be accomplished all your goals with respect to that item, such as postage. Your savings could be made in postage with other forms of delivery. There are savings that can be made in mileage reimbursement by not letting everyone take the mileage that they're permitted, that they had, that reducing some of the mileage in areas they go to. I think those are savings which any organization that is faced with difficulty would take. I understand that nobody wants to take these, but the alternative is cutting programs. So I would agree that it's worth the effort to try and remove the athletic rental charge, because I don't think that's necessarily fair. And I do believe there's other areas in the budget that would have less impact, although difficult and not desirable, but achievable.
But the motion on the table relates to two specific areas, electricity and...
Postage.
Postage. I've got to write that down.
My comment.
Okay. Any further comment? Dr. Tidal wants to make a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I've run this athletics pay-to-play up the flagpole for three years. If this doesn't pass this time, it's never coming back out of my mouth again. This is an attempt to not cut programs. This is not a program cut. This enables us to continue to offer our athletic program, so this is an... It is very difficult, if you're trying to make, you know, sacrifice across the board to a lot of different areas, it's very hard to come up with any kind of palatable way to do it with respect to athletics. I mean, if you have to do it at all. You know, you don't want to cut a sport. You don't want to cut JV sports. You don't want to cut freshman... You know, you don't want to do any of that. And so this is an attempt to preserve programs. So that's why I want to say on that part, I can't argue philosophy with you. That's the board's call on that one. I'm very suspicious that we can affect any of these savings that you've identified. I don't know how we would be assured we could pull off the $45,000 in electricity or the $5,000 in postage. It's a roll of the dice. I mean, I think it's dodging something that really should be, you know, would be a real cut, but, you know, I don't know. I don't know if Tom Yonosay anything on electricity. I mean, it's a... It's... I don't know. Anyway, I don't have a...
Comments from the board?
I have a good feeling that those cuts would actually come to be, so that's my concern on that side, but I fully understand the philosophical issues that the rental charges present. There's only so many times I'm going to beat my head against this particular wall.
Mr. Convatito?
You know, I voice my opinion on charging one sport a fee versus another sport, and I don't think it's right. I don't... On the other side, I don't believe in making cuts that aren't really cuts and not having them come to fruition. That said, I could support, I mean, based on roughly 2,350 students in the athletic program, a $25 a head fee would take care of this $50,000, and it would be evenly distributed against everybody across the board, not based on what sport they play. And that's something I could deal with.
But that's not the motion on the table at the moment?
Yeah, I can't support the motion.
Okay. Any other final comments on the motion, so we can move forward on the motion? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one final word about the electricity. I certainly hear what you say, and I honestly don't believe this would be a phantom cut in that I think it's time that, we keep talking about all of our fixed costs, and it leaves us with very, very little to look at. And I think this needs to be put out there as a challenge to the administration, that this is an area where it is required, that they must as make an administrative commitment to this savings, and with some muscle behind it in terms of, this is being expected, you've been budgeted for this amount. It's, I believe it can happen, but I think that some, it needs some force behind it, and I think this would give it that force.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, the motion in front of us is to remove the high school athletic rental charges of $50,000 from the list that is in front of you, and replace it with a $45,000 reduction to the electrical budget, realizing it will be spread in some fashion, and $5,000 from postage. Everybody understand the motion, the amended motion that's in front of you? All in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand. All opposed to that motion? Mr. Convatito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Zierkona, Mr. Carey. The motion fails 5 to 4.
Mr. Chairman, I move to call a question.
Another procedural. We have a call to the question. Okay, it is not debatable. It has to be voted on by six members if they feel that we're done. All in favor of the calling of the question, raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer. We have four. So we have all opposed. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand. It's 10 of 11. I'm going to suggest that we extend, take a motion to extend the meeting till quarter of 12, because we have other agenda items on the budget, on the item. Mr. Convatito?
So moved.
So moved. Mrs. Cannelli? All in favor of extending the meeting till quarter of 12? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabean, all opposed. Mr. Lou, Mrs. Zierkona, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand. So let the minutes record that event. So the motion is approved, so we are extending the meeting. Mr. Convatito.
Mr. Chair, one last motion, and then I'll be quiet for the rest of the night.
You said that before.
Are you saying that after one more motion, you would vote to call the question?
Yes, I will. On the high school athletic rental charge, $50,000, I move that the notes, notation underneath it read at $25 per person, per sport, not to exceed $75 per family, and the line item stays the same at $50,000.
Is that per family, per year?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is that the notation, that the notation fee to offset sports with rental charges be stricken, and that the high school athletic rent, rental chart, or high school athletic fee, the line item be $50,000, and the notation be $25 per sport, per student, with a cap of $75 per family, per year.
So from both the title area and from the description notes, we're taking out the word rental, because it doesn't relate to the rental of sports. It's just fee to offset sports with $25 per sport, not to exceed $75 per family, per year. That's your motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Mrs. Gerber? Do you wish to make further comments on it? Then the second, and then I'll go to Dr. Title. Mr. Convatito, any further comments on it, or you set? Mrs. Gerber, do you have any further comments that you want to make?
I guess just through the chair to Dr. Title, it does, is this something that you think would actually end up being $50,000?
That's exactly what I'm trying to calculate in my head. I think it's, it's easy enough to do at $25 per, you know, thing. It's the cap that throws us for a loop, because to really calculate that, we'd have to look at all the families, and, you know, that means one child playing three sports caps you out.
It's pretty close.
So, yeah, it's just a question, how many have it? So I guess I would, and I don't know if you really have to even make this in, I don't know what you want, if you want to do this at all, I just, I think I'd like some flexibility on the cap. You know, I mean, just if we run the numbers with real numbers and real families and real kids and find out that we're $5,000 short, we might have to increase it.
No objection to the, to eliminate the cap.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is, you want a cap, we'll put a cap in to hit the target of 50,000. Is that the basic idea there? Okay.
Who seconded that motion? Are you, are you acceptable to that? So the motion therefore would be to fee to offset sports with $25 per sport, with a cap to be set by the administration, with a cap per family, per year, to be set by the administration. Is that, everybody understanding that is the motion? Any comments on the motion? Mrs. Zierkona?
This is a modified version of pay-to-play. I can't support pay-to-play. I'm sorry. It took me a very, very long time to just rationalize in my head, passing along a user fee for the rental, so I can't support this. I'm sorry. I just do not believe in pay-to-play.
Any further comments? Mr. Lou?
I will not be supporting this as well, for the same reasons. I think when we start to do this, it becomes a slippery slope. We no longer become public schools, but we start paying for everything. There are other ways to find cuts in this budget by not asking people to pay more.
Any final comments? If no, not, are we ready for a vote? The 50, Mrs. Cannelli?
Just last comment, follow-up to Mr. Lou's comment that there are other places to cut. Now's the time for those ideas, because otherwise, we are, if this cut doesn't pass, we're looking at singling out the bowlers, the gymnasts, the hockey players, the sailors, the skiers, the swimmers, that they would take on a fee that nobody else is being asked to in any other activity like this. And so I would want to know what your other ideas were, because otherwise, I would hope you wouldn't want to single those athletes out.
But the motion that is on the table is the motion that's on the table.
Right, but I'm speaking to his opposition to that motion.
Any other final comments on the amendment? Does everybody understand the amendment that is in front of you? Okay. All in favor of the amendment to keep the $50,000 in the line item, but that it is composed of a fee to offset sports with $25 per sport, with a cap to be set by the administration per family, per year. All in favor? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Carey. All opposed? Mr. Lou, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Zierkona, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand. The motion fails 4 to 5.
Mr. Chair, move to call the question.
Second.
Mr. Convatito, move to call the question.
Second.
You seconded. No debate on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question, raise your hand. Mr. Convatito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Zierkona, Mrs., Mr. Carey.
For God's sake, we're going to be here all night.
Three, four, five, four, five?
Going once, going twice.
Well, I'm just making sure that people aren't tired and haven't raised their hand. All opposed? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand. The floor continues to be open. I'm sorry.
It came up earlier, and I'd like to put it on the table as a motion. It is, I think, although nice to have, I think we're making some very tough choices that impact students way too much. So I would move that we actually eliminate the stipend for the liaisons for the middle school. Again, tough choice, but if I'm going to impact it, look, I spend an awful lot of time in middle school with fourth, four kids, and if I had a choice in terms of that, they do have team leaders, I think they can compromise on this. It's not preferable, but to me, it's better than doing what we're doing right now. I think this is way too important. So that would yield us $132 of savings. I first want to make that motion.
132,000.
132,000. I put that on the table. Subsequent to that, I would like to have a discussion of where board members would like to see this go, but first, I want to just have the motion on the table for the deduction for that stipend.
A one-sided reduction?
Correct.
Without identifying the other side? Right?
Right.
It's your motion.
Second.
Mr. Lou seconds it. You've made your argument for it. Is there anything further that you wish to say? Mr. Lou, anything further you wish to say? Any other comments that people wish to make on that issue? Yes, Mr. Fattabean?
I would make a motion to amend that. Make a motion to amend that to include reinstating the, or eliminating the athletic rental charge? Eliminating the music-assured experience? And eliminating the Fairfield Arts for Youth? And if I can add correctly, I will amend that reduction amount of 132 to add up to, or so that it adds up to those items, which if I, give me a seven.
Which I believe is 69.5.
So it would be reduction of 69.5 and adding back in the items I mentioned would add up to the corresponding amount.
That's an amendment to the motion. Is there a second to that amendment? Mrs. Cannelli? Let me ask Dr. Title if he has any comments on that amendment.
Well, I, I don't approve of the idea of eliminating these liaisons. I'll have, Dr. Rosado happens to be here, explain that, but we have important work going on in the middle schools, in terms of school improvement, data teams, the running of the building, very important to the principal, but I'll let the principal speak for himself.
I think, as already has been said, the liaisons in the middle school are the school leadership team. One of their primary responsibilities is the development and implementation of our school improvement plans. A big part of that is our school climate initiatives, which you all know very much about. They are the main communication vehicle across the, across the grade levels among the teams. So I, you know, I depend on them a lot at the middle school level, and I don't, I know my colleagues do as well, to make sure that what we're doing is consistent across each of the teams. The data teams, which we've implemented this school year, go directly through the liaisons. They're the ones coordinating what is going on there, so it is, it's a very important piece, and these are teachers who are working full-time in the classrooms. They know exactly what's going on, and they're paid a stipend to coordinate what's going on across their grade level.
And it's extra work after school, a lot of times, right?
It's all after, it's all after school.
Questions from the board. Mr. Carey, and then Mr. Convatito.
Just for clarification, we have employees that are being paid and expect this stipend because they've been given these positions. Can we even take it away contractually if we wanted to?
You can take it away, as long as you take away the work. But then who's left to do the work?
Okay. So the next piece is, we did have this discussion, I believe, two years ago, in-depth, and we heard a lot of testimony on the value of the program, the importance, especially at this fragile age with the transition for these students coming into the grades. And a lot of times, these things look really good on the surface, so we're going to, we're going to clip some money off the top, but the reality is, there's very valuable things that are going on here, and I won't be supporting this. I think that we're getting into an area now where unfortunately, this board seems to tread from time to time, whereas laypeople, we're becoming educational experts again. And I'm very concerned that our superintendent and our professional staff is saying one thing, and we think we know better. So if we do, please convince me, but I haven't heard a good reason to eliminate this for children who are ages 11 to 13.
Thank you. Any other further comments? I happen to agree with Mr. Carey that I think we're on very dangerous ground when we start designing at 11 o'clock at night a staff structure that we expect the superintendent to be able to deliver services, and so I just think this is a mistake of great magnitude, personally. Mrs. Brand?
Please understand, I don't take this lightly, but I think we're making a mistake as well. I think what we're looking at, and have to look at, is, again, students first. So when I'm looking and evaluating any things that are before us, it's primarily what I think is going to hit a student on a day-to-day basis. These are not positions, this is a stipend. They do have a team leader, the work can be divided, it is not preferable.
No, there's no team leaders.
We always had team leaders, so is this different?
These are the team leaders.
These are the team leaders, same, same thing.
Again, I'm going to go back to the same thing. We're not talking about people losing jobs, we're not laying anyone off. It's, it's not something I would like to do, but I really feel we're really impacting students. And at this juncture, I do think we are already well into this, because we're already looking at this. Personally, I don't really think board members should be doing any of this, and I'm not happy about it for that very reason. I don't think we can have it both ways. I don't think we can say, we're not going to delve into this, but then we're going to delve into this. We're right in, smack in the middle of it. And I, quite frankly, don't agree with the process, but we're here now. I do think it's imperative that our top priority, again, be our students and what we're providing the students. And I, it isn't that I disagree with Mr. Rosado, I know how you feel, I don't feel any different, I appreciate it, and it's a tough choice, but I think the students come first.
Are we ready to act on the motion? Mr. Carey?
With all due respect to the campaign speeches I've been hearing this evening.
Mr. Carey?
I
On the motion?
On the motion itself, we've heard in-depth, a false dichotomy is being created here. We've heard in-depth from our team, now less than two years ago, the value and importance of having team leaders to the educational program and to our students. And I don't understand how this is being portrayed as the either-or. Again, our educational professionals are telling us we need this for our children at this age and this place in their, in their career. This is how we are structuring our program. We just can't start pulling pieces out of our program arbitrarily, and I, I'm vehemently opposed to this.
Thank you. Mr. Lou?
I just want, so we're still at Mr. Fattabean's amended motion, right?
Yes.
And I want to just make sure, is Mrs. Brand good with that amended motion?
Fine.
Any further comments from the board? Are we ready for vote? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one question, because we're not talking about the elimination of the position even. We're talking about a reduction in terms of who's fulfilling those roles, and the data teams will take place stipendless. They, all data teams do. So we're not talking about this even being eliminated. We're talking about, I would assume
No, they're being eliminated.
Fewer people occupying the position.
Right, but we have a structure in the middle school of liaisons at the grade levels that perform a multitude of tasks. They are critical to the operation of the middle school, you heard from Dr. Rosado. They're critical to the improvement efforts that we have going on in place on a per-person basis. It's a very small amount of money. It's extra pay for extra work. Gary, you want to add anything? I don't want to misconstrue this, I just want to be clear.
These are, these are the team leaders, so these are the, these are the folks that we, and we meet on a monthly basis as a full team, but they're meeting weekly at their team level to handle team business, whether it's transition activities, you know, coordinating other activities within the school, field trip activities, et cetera. Budget issues are coming up, they're the ones that I'm going to be going to, to find out what their colleagues are, are asking of them, and what they want to include, et cetera. So they're the main conduit of communication across each of the levels. Transition from grade five to six, they're very involved in that, and from eight to nine, they're, they're the ones who are the go-to people at the grade level.
I think for me, the point of frustration is that, and again, by and large, I've been 100% supportive of the idea that we can't do anything with our administration, and yet it's still absolutely a source of frustration that there has been no touching, no talk of reorganization, no further examination of any way in the infrastructure of the school. And for the record, I'm not running for office in November. These are my ideas, and I just, that for me has been a source of tremendous frustration. I think that if this were to pass, and there would be a percentage of this eliminated, and a lower number of people who are fulfilling this position, we're not talking about the elimination of $132,000, that's not the motion on the table, that it would involve some additional administrative work by our assistant principals in terms of communicating with their staff, yes, it would. That's part of the reason we are pushing through to have this budget passed now, so that central office and the schools have time to adjust. It's not that I think this is a fluff position at all. I do fully recognize the importance of communication. I do fully recognize the importance of communication. And yet, there has been no give in administration, and I, and I think this is a little bit of a, a nod to that, to be honest. And I'm not doing that, saying that in a petty way. I'm saying that I think this will involve some work, additional work by people. We do also have our, an outstanding deputy superintendent in terms of secondary education. This is going to be filtering down, and it will involve greater communication. The converse to that is, we will be eliminating a discriminatory rental charge, we will be saving some important musical components, and that's the thinking going on for me.
Are we ready for a vote? So the amendment to the amendment is to redo, to reduce the team leaders by 69,500 so that we can reinstate the 50,000 and eliminate the rental fee provision, 16,3500. Where was the, where were those two items from? The music-assured service and the Faye program. Fairfield Arts. Fairfield Arts. Does everybody understand that, the motion in front of you, the amendment?
I don't understand the repercussions of the motions. If you're gonna cut 69,500 from a $132,000 budget, are we voting to, first of all, I don't even know how much the stipend is, so I assume we're voting to cut the amount of the stipend?
No. That's set in the contract.
So that's, so it's $132,000 is going away if we pass this motion?
No, you'd have probably half as many, I don't know how you'd do it. Some grade levels would have it and some wouldn't? No. No, you have no idea really how it would happen. Right? Neither do we.
Honestly, I, no, I hadn't considered it, so.
Yeah, this is, you know, I mean, if you really want to cut the $69,000 and restore these things, then let's talk about something else to cut, not this.
I, I, I don't see how, we don't know, know what the effect is on this, we've got no information on this. We're essentially eliminating this position, and, and to hack this thing up at 11 o'clock at night, I think is just really bad policy.
I agree.
Are we ready to act on this amendment? Are we ready to act on this amendment? Is the amendment clear to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to call the question.
Call the question, Mr. Convetito. Second, it's not debatable, requires six votes, all in favor of calling the question on the amendment to the amendment. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand. The motion passes, we'll meet, go immediately to the vote, which is to the 69,500 on one side so that we can reinstate the 50,000 on the rental line, the 16,000 and the 3,500, the Faye, and the music shared experience. Everybody understand that? All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, raise your hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Carey, the motion fails. Are we now ready to call the question on the entire motion?
Call the question, Mr. Chair.
Second, please, we keep getting five votes, we're not gonna go anywhere, people.
It's non-debatable. It's 11:10 at night, the motion is to stop debate and proceed immediately to the motion. So all in favor, say aye. And raise your hand, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, those opposed. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, the motion passes six to nine.
Thank you.
Six to three. Six to three. We just added six board members. So now, we're back to the main motion as it has been amended, and as I understand it, and Mrs. Moncel is our scorekeeper, but the items from $50,000 down to the last item, $30,000, the gifted program for 83,000 is no longer on that list. The swimming is no longer on that list. Are those the only two items that have been removed from this list? And the, the gifted program for 83,000, that came from the capital technology, that's the offset. And the swim program for 26,000, Mrs. Moncel?
Technology.
3,000.
Fees and fees. You added back three, you added to the list 3,000 for Board of Ed workshops and 106,000 in tech capital.
In total. An additional 23.
An additional 23.
Right.
And tech capital.
Right. Got it.
Okay. We're ready to have a vote on that? Everybody understand the motion that is in front of us? We're not debating the motion, I just want to make sure you understand what it is that you're voting on. Any questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Oh, that's right, too. Thank you. Mr. Lou. So now we have the motion, and for those of you who have been following the scorecard and heard my summary, hopefully you have it correct. It is late at night, if you stand up and start talking about why we have to save the gifted program and that is no longer on the cut list, I'll have to ask you to say, "No, that's not germane to the motion." And if you're here to talk about the swimming that is no longer on the cut list, then I have to say that that is also not germane to the motion. You are welcome to talk about that at the end of the meeting during open public comment, but at this time, it's only comments related to the motion. So if there's clarity on that, who wishes to go first? And I would ask you to line up so I have a sense of how many minutes? Please state your name and address.
I'll keep it under 10. Neil Fink, 70 Crest Terrace. I don't know, or I don't believe that it was the chairman's fault, but I feel that the public has done a terrible disservice tonight, the way that this process played out, allowing public comment only at this point after the question has been called, because my understanding of the rules would be, if anybody from this audience makes a persuasive argument that the board would like to then reconsider one of the cuts, that would require a suspension of the rules because you've already moved to call the question. I think it's a shame that the process played out that way, and that all the people here who turned out, who really care, are not really getting any, you know, valid or fair input, because essentially the decision and the process is already done. I'm very disappointed that no board member brought up the issue of the custodial overtime fees. That's gonna have a tremendous detrimental effect on the PTAs who, you know, we really strive from PTA to be a partner to the Board of Ed and to supplement in many ways. I mean, literally, if you take all the PTA units and the PTA council as a whole, we contribute in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to the betterment of our school system and the improvement of education for our students. And now you're gonna hit us with this additional fee. I feel like it's just too many times coming back to the well, asking the PTA to pay for things that really, you know, the school district as our partner, you know, should be supporting us on. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. Mr. Fattabean, thank you very much for your willingness to put something out there, I really appreciate it. One thing, the rental fees, I'm sorry, all we're doing is creating an inequitable situation. I am, it sickens me that we are now using our students as a revenue source for this budget. The parking fees, we're supposed to pay for a safety security officer, that has now become a revenue source. We pay taxes, we support the educational process, but to keep going on the backs of kids for additional fees and fees and fees is unacceptable. I was kind of excited to see that someone was willing to go outside of the box, and I, I agree, there aren't going to be any easy choices, but at some point, we have to step away from status quo, and we all have to step back and start making some decisions. Because the drivers aren't going away, the programs are going away. The quality of education is going to continue to decrease if we continue to offer less and less programs and services. And, you know, I, I can't, it's very hard as a parent to stand up here and go to other town bodies and support a budget the size of this one, and watch that there's nothing in it in new initiatives or increases in programs. We're, we're always going off the backs of these kids. So I know a lot of us have been labeled anti-education, but we're not. We just like to see more education being what the Board of Ed is looking at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, please, so that we can have everybody have a chance to speak within the time that we have left, please state your name and address.
My name is Lisa Havy, I live at 216 Longview, and I'm gonna speak as president of PTA Council. I'd like to reiterate what Neil was saying about the process here tonight. It's appalling, it's absolutely, it's, I don't have polite words, so I won't go into it. It's just inconceivable that you would look to a group of people that support education and not include them in the process. It's mind-boggling. So in lieu of that, I would like to ask you to have the courage to stop taking programs from the kids. It's not pretty, it's not easy, but you need to take a look elsewhere. Be brave, be strong. People will handle it, we'll move on, just like we've been told over the years. We adapt, the school will adapt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Tricia Donovan, 164 Tanner Drive. Not to bring up math again, but in math, we encourage students to take multiple solutions to, we find multiple pathways.
Is this related to the budget?
If you give me a second.
Please make it related to the budget.
We encourage creative problem-solving, there are multiple pathways to get to a solution, and we're not finding that. What we're doing is nickel and diming the kids and the programs instead of making real substantial reforms of how education is delivered and the administration is structured. This is disgusting.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Mark Patton, 503 Belly Road. I said it at a previous meeting, but in, in, it wasn't on the table tonight, but the fourth and fifth, fourth and fifth language, word language that was reduced previously is very ineffective right now, and I would hope that in the, in the coming year that you would look at either combining that budget and maybe just give that whole thing to the fifth graders, or just reduce it entirely and save money that way. I think that time could be better used for core curriculum instruction time, because as it is, it doesn't work. I mean, obviously, if there was money to restore the entire thing, that would be the best-case scenario. I'm thrilled that the gifted program, you know, is staying the course and is back in. I would hope that, again, with that, that there's still a look into the two-track system in middle school and high school, and hopefully that all the issues that have come up this year can be looked at to make sure that that is indeed the correct system that we have to go to. I'd like to thank the board for all their hard work, this has been an excruciating budget season, RTM level and Board of Ed level, and thank you for your time and your service, and to next year.
Thank you. Have the two of you decided who's going next?
Ladies first.
Please do. Please state your name and address.
Nancy Habberly, 30 Duck Farm Road. I would just like to say that I feel like cutting that one music class, though it seems to be just one music class, is not just cutting one music class. You are doing a tremendous disservice to the kids who shine in music and in the arts. The arts support all learning, and people do not understand that, who are not artists or who don't excel in that. But there are children who, with special needs and others, who shine in those areas, and I think it is, it is just a shame that you are devaluing that. I know it sounds like it's, oh, it's simple, it's just one class. It's not just one class, you're going to be taking things away from these kids, and I understand your argument about, oh, well, they get pulled for band, they get pulled for, you know what? My child is a special needs child, he gets pulled for his services, and in pulling him for those services, he is gaining. Pulling these children, as you're calling it, for band and orchestra, even though those are elected, they are gaining, and now they're gonna be losing.
Thank you very much. Can I clarify that there's three people left in line, and so that's it, three people, correct? If not, please stand up now, but I'm gonna say that the last person in line at the moment is the last person speaking. Please state your name and address.
John Lowell, 524 Sturgis Road. I'd like to basically start this back in January, and I think the problem originates with the way the budget's prepared. The budget is prepared budget versus budget, not budget versus actual, and rolled forward. So when we're looking at these things, and we go, and we look at the most recent report from April, you'll see we're a million dollars ahead of budget on salary. So we're actually looking to cut things that we probably don't need to cut if we're comparing an actual to a budget, as opposed to numbers that are now 18 months out of date. But I do commend you for restoring the programs that you have, but I want to, you know, thank Mrs. Cannelli for saying what she did, which is, it's amazing that we're going after programs still, and we haven't started to think about restructuring or going after anything in the overhead. Appalling. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Jennifer Hoffman, 118 Whitewood Drive. I'm here speaking in defense of the music program. As the other speaker said, yes, we're cutting one class, or it seems to like be one class, but the kids, when they're in chorus, you could have 80 kids, so they're not really having a music class calling chorus their second class. I also would like to speak in, in defense of that being non-instructional time. I have a fifth grader now. The music program is amazing, and if anybody wants to see what the fifth grade does, come to our spring concert, which is on Thursday. They do amazing things. My kid, she's gonna be gone, so I, does fifth grade music matter to me? Absolutely. Because from that program, she has probably gained more in confidence than she has gained in anything of the academics.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker for the night.
Julie Gottlieb, I was gonna say D6, but I'm not gonna do that, 153 Applegate Road. First of all, thank you. Like, like Mark said, I know this has been an excruciating process for all of us that have been involved in this this spring. I do agree with what Mrs. Cannelli said. It, it really saddens me to hear, well, we could take this away from the gifted, or we can take this away from the special ed kids, or we can eliminate middle school liaisons, or we can touch the average kids, we can look at music, and we can look at art, and it just, like Lisa said, I just don't have words. So I would respectfully ask that you please go back and look closely in the coming year at administration and, and overhead, and, and how programs and services are delivered. Because the things that should be discussed in, in a meeting like this, this evening, are not the things that impact the kids, and it just breaks my heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The motion has been called, so we have no further debate, and we're ready to vote on the motion. I've restated it a couple of times, I assume that all board members know what is in front of us. More importantly, I assume Mrs. Moncel has the scorecard down pat. All in favor of the second member, this is a divided motion, so we are now voting on from the line item that says Faye N E L L down to the line item that says Magnet Discovery Transportation. All in favor of this list of budget adjustments, raise your hand and vote aye. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Carey. All those opposed? Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Lou, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Brand. The motion passes five to four. I want to thank all board members for the discussion tonight. No matter how you voted on any individual issue, none of us wanted to cast the votes tonight that we had to vote. It's all as a result of a reduced allocation, and so we are what we are. Now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Let me give some direction first.
Sure.
Okay. There are two items, the guidance on policy 6200 in the budget review process that probably should and could get postponed to the next meeting. I'm wondering if we can allow enough time for at least the first readings so that we can then, because the policy committee is... can then, because the policy committee is kind of falling behind in their work, and they, if we don't get at least those things on the agenda, then we can't move them forward. So, that, that is a suggestion I have. Mr. Carey, you want to make something?
Well, I was going to move that we tabled items A through F and new business, Mr. Chair. But.
I'd like to move to.
And I will. I'm going to, I'm going to move that we tabled items through, A through F due to the late hour of the evening to our next regular meeting.
I wonder if you'd open that up to items 11 through 13. Why? Yes, you can.
Well, first, Mr. Carey, is that your motion, A through F?
That's, 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 that's my motion.
Okay. Mr. Fattabene, is that your second motion? So, the motion on the table is to table items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Any discussion on those items? Mrs. Cannelli?
I don't know. This rises to the level of a friendly amendment. I'd love to remove item E from that list because that is our next agenda for policy, and we very much need, if not direction from the board. I understand not a full-fledged conversation, but I'd at least like to explain what we need from you, even if I get it via email.
Which you could have without board discussion.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other comments on tabling A through F? Having heard none, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion to table items 11A through 11F, raise your hand. Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iaccone, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand, all opposed? I don't blame you. I would have preferred E and F. All opposed, Mrs. Cannelli. So, we're now on to public comments and petitions. Any, thank you, any member of the public that wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Please do.
My name is Jennifer Tannelli-Biando, F485 Romanoc Road, and I am a swim therapy mom. Thank you so much. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for reading our letters. Thank you for listening. Thank you for visiting the, the swim therapy program and seeing those really special kids work so hard. You did the right thing tonight. Those children needed your vote, and I just really wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
State your name and address.
Patty Donahue, I'm 1333 Congress Street. And I also am a swim mom with a special needs child with a whole host of disabilities. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to figure out a way to make it happen for them because there actually is no other way that we can duplicate what they're doing in the pool, in the class, or in the classroom or the therapy room. So, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
I am Kelly Fedek at 330 11 o'clock Road. I emailed all of you. My son, Mikey, was in the swim program for six years, and it enhanced his very short life in ways that you cannot imagine. And it also enhanced the lives of the other kids who went to swim with him. He was, he was so, the other kids just were so in awe of his ability to swim. I mean, he swam better than many of them, and he could not speak and could not feed himself and could not do really very many things. But thank you to Mike Abraham, who taught him to swim, and it was like the greatest thing. And I'm really just so pleased that you voted unanimously to keep this program. It really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And is this the last speaker? State your name and address, please.
Kelly Dunn, 205 Tuckholin. I just, I want to reiterate the thank you and the efforts that you guys made tonight to be creative. I know some people in the audience were not probably as hopeful that, or were hopeful that you could be even more creative, but I appreciate the efforts that you made tonight. And thanks again for restoring the swimming program. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no more further public comments, we now have open board comment. Mrs. Iaccone.
Through the chair, Dr. Title, I would just ask that you consider painting numbers on the parking spots at the high schools and giving people assigned spots for parking so that kids that have to pay for a spot have a spot and don't run out for, run out of spots. I read with the letter from the student that came in, he makes a great point, and I hope you guys will consider assigning people specific parking spots.
Anything further on this side of the table? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just very briefly, I actually think that's a great idea. Again, if we can find the money for the paint, but it's, I agree with.
If you get a stencil, I'll bring the paint.
And I'll join you because I agree with Mrs. Iaccone. I think that's a great idea. And I would also like to extend my thanks to Dr. Title and all of his staff who stayed so long because this was a brutal budget season for not just this meeting, but many meetings. And even if I wasn't completely agreeing with you, I value all of the work that you did for this, and I just think it's well worth noting that we have a very hard-working staff, and I really do appreciate, Dr. Title, all that you've done.
Okay. I do encourage individual board members to take a look at item 11E, Board Discussion and Guidance on Policy 6200. Jennifer and her committee will be greatly guided and helped if you take the time to jot down some individual email suggestions so they have your thoughts as they have their next meeting.
Mr. Chair, to clarify your point, this is especially targeted at pilot programs.
Yeah, at the pilot program. It's not a complete review.
So, this isn't just this broad curriculum. It's very much looking to establish pilot program criteria for the district.
Mrs. Brand, you have one last comment.
Two things. One, I did send you my comments. Did you receive them? I just want to make sure because initially, they bounced back, so I resent them.
When did you send that?
Don't worry about it. I'll do it again. Clearly, you didn't get them. Okay, that's one thing. And the second thing was, if we don't think education or that the educators consider this an endurance sport, the fact that they're still sitting here and it's 11:35, and I know what time they're going to be starting in the morning, it is. And my sincere thank you for your endurance and your patience.
And I promise I'm done with embarrassing you. But if I call you doctor, you won't mind. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. It's done.
Thank you for the pen. Thank you for the budget.